Okay, good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting of August seventeen twenty twenty-three. It is six oh one. Um, I need to do a world call of the present members we have with us tonight. We have Mr. Richard Baker. We have Mr. Peter Surgeon. We have Mr. Craig Alexander. And we have Mr. George Seal and Sarah Langgett as members of the planning board. We also have Hans Van Smussen, who's our CEO. And personally in the audience, we have Mr. John Slushman, who's the applicant today. That said, I will open the meeting with new business, which is the application for Mr. Slutter, located in ninety Pine Beach Road. And that's will be map number forty-two lot fifteen. This property is located right on Gray Pond. It is a residential recreational property. And the proposed constructional change in use is to rebuild existing camp due to poor structural condition of the sixteen camp. Existing source disposal system type and capacity. It is concrete and regular one thousand gallons capacity. Present numbers of rooms or bedrooms, I would say it's four bedrooms to be added. Only this applications are zero. The property was purchased within the shoreline zone October of twenty twenty-one. And for that, there will be a copy of the septic system inspection report with the application. The total lot area is twenty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-three square feet. The lot area within the shore land zone is same number twenty twenty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-three square feet. The square footage of unvegetated surface within the shoreline zone, including all structures, driver, driveways, parking, walkways, and patios is approximately twenty-five hundred square feet. The total area of clear openings of wooded vegetation in square feet is approximately sixty-six hundred square feet. Total number of structures on the lot is two. We have a site plan to scale with the application. The present structure square footage of the camp is a thousand eighty square feet. And of the garage is seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. And a shed is ninety square feet. The proposed structure square footage is going to end up being a thousand seven hundred and sixty-two square feet. And the garage and the shed will remain the same. The garage was seven hundred and sixty-eight and the shed will be ninety-two. And with that, I open the floor for discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
Trying to get an handle on where is the downtime time to. Who you buy from and who you name?
You know, the six unit condo.
Okay, get on the field, take a ride.
Yeah, I'm I'm close to the way down. It's a small red camp just before the Ross. Before me, one of the buses used to own it two years ago, but sold it. So long, I believe, in Portland, who I live from back in twenty-one.
Oh, yeah. All right, gonna get an info. Yeah.
Again, I'm not sure.
Thanks for the tone.
Right, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, we've dealt with this application, not this application, but the railway one, which was a re fix-up, more or less renovation and a some expansion allowed under the ordinance. And if that was approved back in May of twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two. The question I've only got to have is that that particular application wouldn't have had us even considered whether the structure be moved back because it was a renovation. I don't think it's worth fifty percent. Carrying it down is, and that's what they proposed, that we would at least have to consider the relocation aspect and which is may not be reasonably relocated. But I have to ask whether that wooded area is your property as well, correct?
Yes.
On the on the far side of the property, yes. Okay. I guess if that and I wish to ask the fighting board what thoughts are whether or not in considering relocating it, whether we would look at opening up another area to move the structure back when in fact there's nothing that would require Mr. Slusser to replant or do anything other than grass at different locations. So it's just an issue that I think we need to at least consider.
Well, that's definitely a question for us to decide. It may require us to do so.
If I may add something to that point.
If it's okay with the chairman.
Sorry, I don't know what.
That's fine.
That area that's depicted as wooded on my on my plot plan here. The half closest to the lake, maybe the third, third of it that is closest to the lake is level ground wooded. And the back two thirds of that is low. It's probably could be considered wetland. So that area almost is is one, I'd probably be pushed over there because as the property goes around, you know, it kind of melts in a little bit, though it would be a smaller envelope of where you could put a structure. And whereas the side is kind of lightly colored where the driveway, the garage and the existing structure is is fairly flat. And between the garage and the the current structure, I've got a subject line and a subject thing, you know, between there, but can't really move that way. And then the the circle around the driveway, inside that circle are a number of mature trees. So there's, you guys can do, you know, what you feel is appropriate. I just wanted to give you a little bit of layout of what the property looks like.
If I might add a little definition to that. Across the road behind this property is basically wetland. We were out there, it was January time or whatever, when we had the melt and the water was crossing the road. Cameron Duport from D E P came down. He basically said that was a wetland forested of special significance. And this wooded area is where the culvert goes. And this is all pretty much a rain field for this wetland that is behind Pine Beach. So while it's not an active stream, it's rocky, mossy. It's natural duff area that disperses the water before it hits the lake. So disturbing that probably isn't a good idea.
Pine Beach Road and what fell great addition.
Yes.
That's where we did the site visit last winter.
Yeah.
Further down the line.
Yeah.
I have a couple of clarification clarification type questions. First off, people get into more of the substance, but on your application, the proposed structure square footage, you indicated was seventeen sixty-two. The drawings indicate that the new camp had been nine hundred and ninety-four. What is that difference?
I guess it's it's a, I was kind of confused initially even a year ago when I was doing it. But the question on the application is the square footage of the total building. I think what you may be going after is what is the footprint?
That's right, yeah. And this could be clearer. There's no question about it.
The footprint of the existing building is just over nine hundred square feet. And of the proposed, it's just under a thousand square feet.
Yeah, so the nine ninety-four is the correct.
Is the correct footprint.
Okay, I thought that was the case, but it, so we'll need to get, we'll need to get that fixed.
Yeah, I've got on the back sheet here, I actually got one thousand eighty because that includes the footprint plus he has a small platform going from his deck to his dock, which is about eight by ten.
It's on the application. It's wrong. The other thing, so because of that, in question eight, the the square footage of unvegetated surface, and this may not ultimately make a lot of difference, but I just wonder if that number is also inaccurate and whether or not it includes the driveway.
Quite frankly, I think I took this off my last application. The the unvegetated surface would be the driveway.
The driveway and all the structures, any walkways.
And a lot of, I'm referring to my diagram here. Between the garage and the existing structure is fairly unvegetated. I have, you know, there's a large, there's a tree line that comes up, you know, on this line depicting between, you know, the light colored area and the wooded area. And then obviously this line as a line of trees as well. There's some trees up in front of the garage.
Yeah.
On the far side of the.
Is that because of the overstorey trees that grass doesn't grow there or?
When I bought this place, the, you know, the area where the garage sits today was the old leach field for my septic.
Okay.
And when I came in, you know, a year ago, then my proposal was I wanted to build a garage there. And I ended up putting a new septic underneath the driveway using concrete.
I mean, since you're not expanding the footprint of the camp and in fact reducing it somewhat, this is sort of immaterial, but because you're not, obviously not creating more unvegetated surface area than what was there previously. I was just trying to figure out what needed to yet be corrected on the application form, but maybe that's not worth the time and trouble. The the other question I had is since you're going to be demol- demolishing the existing camp and then building the new one, what what is the foundation going to be?
It'll be a slab.
It's going to be on a concrete slab?
Yes.
Okay, so do you know who your contractor is? The reason I ask is for that kind of where there's going to be that kind of level of excavation work, you're going to need to use a have it on site a D E P shoreline certified contractor and that's.
The excavation contractor will be Dave Stevens.
Okay, so we'll we'll need to get his name, name and number.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I am too. It's just a question of filling in the application.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker, you had a question?
Oh, I was just going back to George's earlier thing about the square footage or whatever. The structure is going to be smaller inside, but it will be taking up some area, I think, that is on new ground. And so if the area that was part of the building before is no longer being used as a building, you may have to revegetate that particular area where the forest and I'm talking about grass.
Yeah. If you look at the photo, Rich, behind immediately behind the camp, looks like bare ground to me. Is that true, correct?
Yes.
Let's bare ground, right? Not just pine needles sometimes.
Bare ground. My my intent, because I didn't want to do anything until I finished every project I was going to proceed with. My idea is to, once we get to the final grade and put the new camp on it, and if I was renovating, it's the same answer. But what I wanted to do is I wanted to make sure that it was graded properly because with the pine needles and the rain, things are tilting more towards the lake. And I want to, you know, grade it so it'll go off to the sides more, especially into that that wetland area where it can seep in slowly and not go to the lake. Another motivation behind rebuilding versus renovating for me, my way, was that right now the gable ends are side to side and the roofs go lake to road. So fifty percent of the water coming off the house is going virtually right into the lake.
Right.
And by turning it and having the gable ends, lake and road, I then could, I think I think I even included something in the application related to this, is that I would be installing French drains to be able to pull the water that comes off the house away from the lake so that it will seep in and so that would conduct in that wooded area.
Yeah.
Trying to do my best for the lake.
Thank you. And then the last question I had had to do with the max, the height of the proposed new structure. And I'm not certain of my numbers, partly because, you know, we work off these eight and a half by eleven and that changes the scale of them. And so I had to estimate my, come up with my own scale, but it looks to me, and please correct me if I got the wrong end of the stick here, but that the existing structure is about twenty-one feet, seven inches or half a foot in height, and the proposed one is going to be more like just under twenty-five feet, like one inch under twenty-five feet. Is that right or?
Very close.
I had a measurement which was estimated to be just under twenty-two feet in height from the low spot to the peak, the current highest peak. I believe in my application, the proposed height of the new building in this plan is just under twenty-four feet. Actually, you're 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 more correct than I am. I think it's just under twenty-five. I will admit that now because I have an opening with my contractor in October, this is kind of, you know, structurally, it's probably what I would build. But in talking with my contractor, because I realized that after I submitted the application, that I may be too tall at the peak. And what he would do right now, that's roughly a twelve twelve pitch. E P will soften the pitch to bring me down to the max height of the existing structure.
Yeah.
And that can be a condition.
Yeah, because I think that in addition to whether the building can be moved back to a greater extent than it already is being proposed to, that's the other big issue for me is is the within that seventy-five feet, the or I should say within, yeah, within seventy-five feet, the maximum height being exceeded because it's going to exceed the height of the existing camp. And it's going to exceed twenty feet.
Yeah.
Close to the camp through the water.
The porch, the water is probably seven to ten feet.
Pardon me?
Seven to ten feet.
Okay. My reason for asking the question would be that the order is to go, is there any expansion within twenty-five feet? And I just want to make sure there isn't any expansion within that first twenty-five feet.
Actually, within that twenty-five feet, because of right now, the existing structure, give or take inches, is roughly thirty-two by thirty-two. And what I'm proposing, at the gable ends, it'll be twenty-eight feet. So I'm actually coming in four feet, you know, closer in. And I'm going to push it back to, I think it's thirty-five and a half, if they were in the thousand, the thousand square feet of footprint. So actually, I'm pushing more of the building, part of the weight, weight, reducing something within that twenty-five. But so.
We need to get it done and writing.
You know, a new.
Those numbers.
Yeah.
We know how far the building is away from the water.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So, yeah, we may be.
Well, but isn't it pretty clear that the square footage, footprint, square footage within twenty-five feet is being reduced?
Because, I mean, yeah, the
I guess the reason I asked the question is just want to make sure that within the definition of expansion of the structure, you can interpret some footprint or height of a structure, including all extension such as the not limited to affect that carriages, forces, and ruiners. That I just want to make sure that there's no expansion in the height of the structure within twenty-five feet. It's just, it's not just footprint.
Okay, so what was the original height you said?
Twenty-one.
I think it was twenty-one, ten, eleven.
Twenty-one, ten. Then this one is twenty-four, ten. Okay, so just by dropping this was twenty-four, ten. So three foot. All right, so if you drop to a ten, twelve, you can gain twenty-eight inches. That's the twelve point. So you'd have to drop twelve inches. So you have to drop to a nine, twelve pitch. But that's totally, you would still have the headroom. You would still have everything else. So just by dropping your pitch, so your dorms would be higher up on the peak. Your knee walls would be a little shorter. But this this building could still be done with a nine, twelve pitch and still make it under this height.
But the current proposal would be adding.
Yeah, so we'd have to change. I couldn't get the the plan or estimate it adjusted in time to get it made up and. So so it's total possible. I mean, we could do a condition that submits a set of prints coinciding with the height that it needs. Because all it is, is just changing that. And you're going north from there to there. Nothing else. And the print's going to change.
Okay.
We'd rather have five feet here. Yeah, even six inches of the peak.
I've got a quick question about the proposed camps. Bringing that joint, it looks like a sketch on the side of the pipeline. In three D. That's a state in the rendition. Sometimes these programs do that. Both then show a set of stairs.
No, that's not.
They taken set, second floors.
Here.
And then the first floor looks like it has a set of stairs going to the basement. So I.
Still. And this existing house. You mentioned your existing.
I think this is the first floor.
Your first floor. Here. Stairs start here up to a landing. Go up to a landing. And then go to the second floor.
Gotcha.
So what's happening is from here, you can see that you're going down to a landing. Here's a landing. This is how it goes.
So it's important, it's important the second floor way up.
So that's. Yeah, you're kind of, yeah. They wanted to show what the stairway would look like. Kind of see where it's.
Oh, where it ends. So they just ripped out the floor and leave the steering there. And the rendition after.
Rendering them.
Can't afford three levels right here. So we've always gone from the height of the existing structure to lower floor. Yes, obviously existing structures, just not the porch.
But Richard.
So what we're discussing. Well, we're discussable. All right, so is existing building, where do we measure?
The the current actual height.
We measure from the peak of the roof?
Yeah.
And it goes to the front of the building towards the lake where it's the lowest.
Or Rich, you probably can answer this better. It depends on the slope because there's that.
Well, the lowest part of the slope.
And but isn't there a thing in there for averaging?
There is. So you don't measure off porch, you don't measure off, you measure off the peak of the existing house to the front of the house, disregarding anything that's in front. But you measure from the highest point down, correct?
Right.
To the lowest point.
The lowest point in front of the lake.
So it's.
So the maximum height can come up to ten feet from the lake. I thought within twenty-five feet of the lake, Richard just said, you can have no expansion even in height. And you're going from about a twelve foot bed roof over a porch with twenty-five foot peak and no more.
But is that peak within twenty-five feet? I didn't think.
It will be within.
It will.
It will be where the porch is.
Really?
And that porch is being included in the house. Part of the camp is watching what ten feet from the lake.
Part of the camp is watching, what, ten feet from the lake?
So I, I, I kind of lost the, uh, the, uh, thread of that conversation. What was it, you guys, I'm trying to say?
Non-conforming structures.
Uh-huh.
Within twenty-five feet of the lake.
Yeah.
Maximum height fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Okay. Right now, the existing structure is less than that.
Well, that.
The new plan, the new plan is taking the house, basically creating a new roof line.
Yeah.
Twenty something feet high.
Mm-hmm.
And it's including that picture, you see that deck, that covered porch?
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna be the main part of the house with the full structure. There will be no more deck.
But we've always, always measured the peak to the front of the house to lowest point. And that's why we've always gone by the height.
Yeah.
The, we, the rich George is correct that, uh. We measure from the peak of the roof down, but if, if there was a, if this is the shoreline. Shore side of the front of the house, and this is at three feet elevation, or two feet, and. Down here, we went to one foot. Then it's the mean of the grade on downhill side, uh. So we got two feet on one corner, down the one foot on the other side.
Yeah.
The height is six inches different. It, it's the medium, uh, mean of the.
Uh, we've never done that, we've always gone to the lowest point, so the lakeside point.
Yeah, I mean.
We've always done the lowest point, we've never done a mean, I've never heard of a mean.
Definition of height of a structure, vertical distance between the middle, original grade prior to construction. Uh, at the downhill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure. And including chimneys, steeples, antennas, and other things that happen.
Well, that's not the way we've always rolled, but if not, it even gives it more. I mean, cause we've always done the lowest side.
And I think in this case, the lowest side is the lakeside, and so. Yeah, I, I don't know, sure, this is one of those cases where it would, it makes that much difference.
Right.
Photographer and dick could have.
Yeah, this, the dead.
I remember this coming up in, uh, in Adam, a case, a, a, an application, Adam Gordon.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that's the only time I remember it coming up.
Yeah.
Cause usually it's something like this where the lowest is the lowest.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I, 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 I really, uh, missed when I was reviewing this, that the, uh. That the peak is, uh, the new peak on the proposed is gonna be within twenty-five feet. Um, but would the alterations that you were describing still?
That'll put it under, um, that'll bring it down to the height that it has.
Existing height.
Yeah, so that deals with the maximum. But does it deal with the increase within twenty-five feet?
That's a good question, I think, uh, the, the, the law, uh, revision, we did, if the, the existing height. Or the, uh, or the statutory height, whichever is greater, rather than. Uh, before, the law was saying it was the lesser, so you can just go, he can go same as existing height.
Right, and right at the moment, he's, he's higher than the existing height.
Yeah, so he has to come down to the existing height.
Yeah.
Which will be higher than the, than the fifteen feet, right?
So, the question, so that's question number one, but, uh, that has to do with, yeah, there's a way to imply with the maximum height of the structure. I'm, I'm playing off of Rich's question about, i- is there any expansion within twenty-five feet of the lake? Which there's, it's probably any is prohibited. Yeah, so if there's any increase in, um. I guess it would even be the volume of the structure, right?
Uh, well, the expansion of structure, our definition doesn't say that.
Yeah.
It says, uh, increase in footprint or height.
Or height, yeah.
Okay, so.
Any increase in height within twenty-five feet would be an expansion of the structure.
Well, to me, the porch is part of the structure, so it's a structure, so. When, when are we breaking these pieces off? Uh, we've never done that before. So, you take the highest part of the structure and you measure, and that's what we've always done. So regardless of its twenty-five feet or not.
Uh, if, if, we have, it's been something that's, but I don't, I, I think it's. In my mind, it's pretty clear in the ordinance that you can't expand within twenty-five feet. Uh, you know, of, uh, you know, twenty-five feet of waters, expansion is prohibited. And an increase in height. Of the building is an expansion under the expansion of the structure.
Uh, it's not an increase in the height of the building, because the height of the building's gonna be the same.
Yeah, so we're good.
Yeah, but an increase in height of the portion of the building within twenty-five.
It doesn't say a portion, it says building. Uh.
Page nine.
Portion of the building is the building.
Maximum footprint. For the principal structure, it may not be expanded to a size greater than eight hundred square feet. The maximum height of the principal structure may not be made greater than fifteen feet. Or the height of the existing structure, whichever is greater. And the height of the existing structure within twenty-five feet is.
No, we don't break it apart like that, we've never had, we've always gone by the existing structure, the porch is part of the existing structure.
Well, lady last week worked real hard to get underneath that height restriction. I, I think we're even looking at the wrong part of the ordinance, to be honest with you, in this, in this particular, for this particular question.
If it's attached to the house, we just had this.
Oh, I agree, I agree, no, I agree with you, Chris.
If it's attached to the house, it's all one structure. You're not breaking up structures.
Yeah, I, I don't.
It's not two structures, it's one structure.
But the part of the ordinance that, that played with the question that Rich is raising is before that, it's on page nine. And that is that the expansion of a structure within twenty-five feet of a normal high water body. Uh. Even if it doesn't, in, uh, increased non-conformity is prohibited. Paragraph A, C A, on page nine, and as Rich read, expansion includes height.
Mm-hmm.
And so, there's a, a two-part question here, and I, I think there's, you know, a way to deal with the maximum height like you described. Uh, the question that I don't know how to get the answer to is, how do we determine if there's a. A, um, is the angle of the roof comes down from the peak to the lakeside edge? Um.
Have we got an expansion definition in the back? We need to come up with an expansion.
Um, they got a definition of expansion of the structure on page seventy-eight.
So, what's considered a structure, we just went through this down on Pine Beach. Where that other building was sitting to the side and it was connected, and that was all one structure.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
So now you're gonna take a porch off and discuss, say, that's of the structure, and not the house itself, even though it's attached.
The house itself, but it says, expansion of any portion, any portion of the structure, doesn't say these structure.
Portion.
Well, I don't think Rich is arguing that this, that isn't all one structure.
No, no, I'm, I'm not arguing that at all, I'm just saying, whatever is within twenty-five feet of the water right now.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever that height is, can't be exceeded when they rebuild within, within that twenty-five feet. Because that's an increase in, that's it, uh, an expansion of the structure.
So, so you're trying to say that we don't know where the height within that first twenty-five?
That, that, if, if the height stayed no higher than the existing structure, than twenty-five feet. And he brought the structure down and tried to recover that. Uh.
I mean, I guess what we'd need to do is, we'd need a measurement of the height at twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
And a determination from the, from the, uh, profile drawing of that height on the proposed structure.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, the drawings we have right now in front of us, I can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I don't know, Hans, do we have full-size drawings?
I don't think we can tell, we didn't even know how far back the structure, I'm sorry.
So it does say portion, so it is dividing it.
Alright.
So basically, you'd have to move that back, so your, the front of your house is at twenty-five feet.
If you get, uh, Mr. Schergen wants to point out something here.
Yeah, alright, so I can look in the definition, page seventy-eight, expansion of the structure. And there's, uh, an increase in footprint or height of the structure. Uh, including all extensions such as, comma, but not limited to, comma, attached decks. Garage, porches, and greenhouses, etc.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, you know, talk nothing about volume, obviously, it's just the footprint, it's two, but here, footprint height, okay.
Yeah, and on the other part, it says portion.
And so.
So, I guess I gotta agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, uh, you want Mr. Baker an agreement?
Yeah.
Good, so, um, uh, are you following, uh, Mrs. Slasher?
I'm a little, um. Let me mention portion, but.
Yeah, well, what's going on?
It's on page nine. And that one key word right there. So, well, I guess I got another question, how tall is the house? Where's your house compared to the twenty-five foot line right now?
Where is the peak?
Yeah. Is it at twenty-four feet or is it at twenty-six feet?
I would, I would, I. I, I have to measure, I mean.
Well, that's key, because if it's at twenty-four feet, then you can match it.
You're good. Because, because of the, what I'm thinking is that the porch. The current porch is sixty.
Yeah.
And. Uh, the, uh. The main box.
Yeah.
Which is currently two stories has the peak.
Mm-hmm.
I think is thirteen feet wide, lake to road, so you got six. Half, half, half of that is, uh. Fourteen. I'd have to be eleven, the porch would have to be eleven feet off the water, and I don't believe it is, so I think the peak is within twenty-five.
If the peak's within twenty-five feet, you would be good.
Yeah.
So that's a measurement we'll need.
The existing peak we're talking about.
Yeah, where is sixty feet?
Mm-hmm.
And I would say. I think it's good, I'll tell you why. He has it in, uh, in the application, there is a drawing of the existing, uh, first level, ground floor. And it indicates, and it said that the porch porch is eight feet, and the length of the structure toward, all the way to the back. Is twenty-six feet, so halfway. Um.
I, I, yeah, I mean.
Can you, can you figure out from this, from that fourth line where the roof line is, uh? I would say that the roof line will be right above that, uh, whole line of, uh. This whole, this whole line right here, where the roof is.
No, yeah. The existing peak is halfway through the living room dining.
Okay.
It is, it is not, because. Uh, the back two bedrooms are currently one-story, the kitchen and bathroom currently are one-story.
Gotcha.
This is the original box, built originally, so the peak are.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so he's within twenty-five, uh.
Because, as, as you can see, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This condition, here's the porch, here's the peak.
Yeah.
There's the back bedroom, and so the peak is, but that's why I was saying.
Yeah.
Six-foot porch.
And I brought it for a minute.
Uh, you, you should have a.
I do, I do, but I, I want him to see it both at the same time. Oh, you're, you're running, thank you, so, so here's the lakeside.
Yeah.
Here's the porch, is the eight, eight feet. Okay.
Probably ready.
Yeah, it's hard to read six.
How far off the lake is it?
I'm.
I don't even think it's. Sixteen feet, so, uh, yeah, it's gonna be right there, so.
From here to here, we have sixteen feet.
It's gonna, that's right there with the height.
So that, that roof comes right from here.
Mm-hmm.
So will be eight, plus that six. So here's where the peak of the roof is.
If they're any of them. Here. No, the porch or the roof structure.
All the way out.
Can't be greater than.
Expansion within this twenty-five.
Right here, in other words, if, if, if this portion right here with the, with the, the deck is now, was. Went like this, that couldn't be allowed, because this is an expansion right there.
So.
You should have a blackboard.
Yeah, I, I, I am following you, let me, let me see if, um. So. This is front elevation, rear elevation. So, and can you help me, Mr. Slasher, to tell me, uh, which side? Which side is to the lake here, this side is to the lake?
This is the lake.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Mister, um.
So, this is the.
It gets a little complicated, uh, um, right, I'll show you, come here, come here. Don't, don't worry, don't worry, don't worry, come here. Yeah, that's a bit, uh, we.
I was looking for.
Right, so this is what's going on. So we are, we are safe on the top portion of it, but we are within the twenty-four, twenty-five feet by twenty-four feet. Yeah, this peak is fine, will be twenty-one, what Mr. Baker is saying is that. None of the new expansion can go above this roof line. If anything is above that, it's a, it's considered an expansion, so this profile takes care of. Defining the expansion, now, I'm not sure. And we have, we have this profile, so all this area, all that would be expansion. But. I don't read the ordinance like that. We said, if you're looking from the side, all this, all that there will be expansion. This peak. The peak is above that line, but I don't read, I don't read the ordinance.
The building ran into the lake where this is, this will be facing the lake.
This will be facing the lake, yeah, so we, we have, uh, the lake is here. And from here, um, and the lake is here in this one. From, from here to here, we have twenty-four feet, and the tallest point is twenty-one. But Mr. Baker is saying that nothing can be above this profile here.
Otherwise, it's.
Otherwise, anything that's beyond that, like expansion, so if you place this profile. Template over here, or this stuff, this thing. Then we're talking about, and it's, all that, all this portion here becomes an expansion.
I'm wondering, we're making this more complicated.
Yeah.
It's a B, because.
It's just the height. The whole gear, the height was in.
Let's say twenty-five feet. Here's the lake over here, right, twenty-five feet goes to there.
Yeah.
We obviously have a lot more height here now than we do now, uh, in this proposal, than we do now.
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying, I said.
You don't even have to worry about the size, it, it's clear, clear that there, um, that there's, uh, a lot more height now. Within twenty-five feet than, than I proposed than now.
Yeah, and what I was trying to show here is that, even if they just let, if he was planning to leave the porch on. But decided to make this roof line go from, from here to there, so you fill in this.
Mm-hmm.
That would be an expansion of the structure within twenty-five feet of water, because it's increasing. within twenty-five feet of water, because it's increasing the height of the porch, portion of the structure.
Yeah.
When it's twenty-five feet of water.
This floor has great, uh, motivations here that I applaud, it's just, you know, it kind of doesn't mesh with the ordinance, because the closeness of the exist, of the camp, and, uh, both, both the existing and the proposed, because, you know, this is, uh, and this, this is the, gonna be the front facing the lake. Uh, and, and so, you know, right now, you just have this porch facing the lake. Well, you're gonna go up to here.
Yeah.
Within twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
So what if, what if the, what if the, uh, change the roof, the roof, uh, that's a little bit and drop the roof line here. Drop this out.
Yeah.
Walkout porch. And, you know, the move is, uh, several, is dormer. Back here, more room. And the shed going back here, if you run the shed going here, all the way back. And then, you know, have a walk.
You follow what's going on?
I love it.
I just had.
I just, when I read the ordinance, I just locked in with the height, the tall height, I don't care that that was.
I understand what you're saying, I'm not even gonna argue, um, it's the portion part.
Well, I, I think you have, you uh, propose the easiest solution, that is just move the front of the house twenty-five feet.
Can you do that?
Say that one more time.
Can you move the front of the house back to twenty-five feet?
Thank you.
Move it over to back twenty-five feet. Um, well, the reason is, is the twenty-five, you know, ten feet behind the camp. Forgot my subject. Thank you. Um, and if I try to go over, you know, even if I try to move it, that, that standard freeze.
I know it's not practical, of course. In a practical extent, you would say that's not practical, but you're still allowed to do things that aren't practical, because well, over this, that's moving as well.
And that's why I asked about septic last week.
And, uh, so it's considered not practical. But you can do not practical. I mean, if you want that footprint, by the way it looks, and by the way the ordinance reads, the front of that house is, the, it's gonna have to be twenty-six feet back, because you're overhanging and everything. Um, so closest in order to put that house in there the way you'd like, the, the front of it's gonna have to be, you know, the house, the overhangs are gonna have to be twenty-five.
We have, we, we have, we received it.
But over.
We consider the overhangs part appropriate.
We would. The, uh, roof.
Twenty-one, thirty.
The overhangs on your roof?
Yeah.
Oh, you're not, yeah, so on the gable end, you're gonna have a one-foot overhang. Right? On your roof, that overhangs the house, well, that's where you measure to. So the house would have to be twenty-six feet if you had a one-foot overhang.
And, um, I don't, I don't mean to be dense, but.
This will help you explain it, this, this profile versus this profile.
Yeah, so you have a, um, so your house comes out.
This is, this is like that.
Then you have your raft that come down, you have this one foot overhang right here. This is where we measure to, right there. Not here, not your house, but this.
When you, when you say measure to, to determine height of what?
No, uh, footprint and, um, distance, your weight. So. Um, and you get the same footprint measuring your existing. So you also get it in your existing house, you don't measure your building, you measure up to your overhangs. So it's gonna be a wash either way, if you didn't measure them, and they're, well, for, but, um, but what I'm saying is, on your gable end, you got your raft, you got your after, you got your gable end, and you have a one-foot overhang. Right, so if you was to move that back, your house would have to be at least twenty-six feet back, not twenty-five.
I, I understand what you just said.
Correct. So the walls would have to be twenty-six, if you had a one-foot overhang. But you're allowed, you would probably get permitted if you moved that back to twenty-five feet, twenty-six feet, whatever. And, uh, moved your septic and messed with your driveway, and you'd have to replant some trees. Probably.
Okay, I got a, a question.
I think that's gonna be your one option. And I just stood up the bat for you, but with what they've brought up, I can't argue it.
So even if he has this and he matched this profile here somehow, right?
Exist in height. But.
If he matched, I, my thought is, if he matched this profile somehow, even he go underneath that profile and cut out that profile this way here somehow, he will pass, isn't it?
He wouldn't be able to with the gable ends pointing towards the lake.
Well, he just got a cut of the house right here. And make this flat.
Make a deck up.
Make a deck up there, that's right.
Yeah, he doesn't want that.
Well, that is a possibility as well, yes.
But you just wanna. Okay, I want you to say.
So, we, we would be.
But he would have to go to the front of the porch.
Uh, we don't want to span beyond this profile, okay? So we, we will be able to, to cut, could, can we cut it this, and where we're here? That means that this profile would have to find, get it there, go down like this and so on. So that, while we are, while this, the ordinance is fine, that you can look at this portion of the house. So I said, what would you think? We just finished the second floor here, and you have that as a porch right there. I know, I'm sorry.
But, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, or trying to understand the ordinance. Um, and my understanding of the ordinance is, uh, expansion of the footprint. And, uh, you know, I think, I think, uh, Mr. Baker, somebody, I, I forget who it was, kind of talked about expansion of the volume versus the structure. And, you know, and is, is there a difference between this footprint? Or, you know, or, you know, this footprint being impervious
Mm-hmm.
on, on, on a property.
Mm-hmm.
Versus, and if I had the gable end at this edge, or if I tilted it like this, this area doesn't change whether this house volume or not.
Right.
And, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm reading it where, um, it's not volume. It's footprint.
But the one thing, from page nine, on the ordinance, uh, I'd argue this, but I thought there was a chance to get around to do something, but the key word is portion. So we can't measure from your house over, so everything.
Again, I, I would, I would argue that.
Can you come over here?
The portion is, you know, I can't expand outside of the footprint.
I, yeah, I get, I understand what you're saying.
Right here. Right here, you gotta put your gable under here.
I think what he means.
So. That's expansion, right here.
People.
That's all expansion.
Right. Right here.
So we, we.
Now.
And when you say gable end.
Oh, 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 I see.
What you mean, this, this anywhere like this?
Yeah.
Cut off.
The way you looked at it.
Okay.
So if, if, uh, so if you just to move the front of your proposed building back twenty-five feet and match the height of your existing building, you would probably get permitted.
Might say, it's, in a different way.
Or redesign it, so, you know, a portion, probably, yeah.
Can I kind of say, please, in a different way? Until and done, you got, uh, within a hundred feet of the shore, you got two pieces there, you got from the, from the lake back twenty-five feet. And, you know, they don't want, they want to, right? The ordinance is particular there. What Mr. Baker is pointing out is that within that twenty-five feet, okay? Then you go to twenty-five feet to a hundred, uh, uh, you can go up to the, uh, twenty, twenty-five, the twenty-six feet, whatever it is, okay? So. And the ordinance was changing back, uh, uh, in favor of the property owner, on that, well, five, six years ago. And, and, and it took out the volume piece altogether, well, for the, from the twenty-five feet to the hundred, it did, gave it the footprint. But it left, and the, the volume piece was left in the, uh, for that's from zero to twenty-five, we closed it to the shore. And that's, does that kind of help clear up in your mind?
I, 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 I would need to, and I'm just looking at, uh.
Okay. And, and, and where, where Mr., uh, 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 Baker was giving, referring to that, so it's, uh, page nine. And you get in the expansion of, of the first paragraph, and you get out of the eighties. And it gets in the expansion of any portion, that gets in the volume. Uh, within the twenty-five feet, okay, in, in there. This is new to me, I'm just learning this, right? And I think two of us are, but we're right on the way. And so, um, so, Mr. Alexander mentioned to you, you can move your whole building right back and get out of twenty-five feet. Or, uh, Sarah sat down, next to you, you can keep the, your, your building with or, you know, within the twenty-five, be within the twenty-five feet, okay? That height, that peak within twenty-five feet. You could, uh, uh, take out, eliminate that roof on the second floor altogether. And so you still get the first, you get the first floor, there, right? And, and the ceiling on that first floor, you can put a porch there, or a porch there. Right? You can do that, that's an option too. And then you have on your double, on your dormer, dormer on the second floor, those shed dormers. And you got showing where you're gonna, those shed was, you know, uh, within the twenty-five feet, with the back, with the back of the, you know, the twenty-five foot, that's that, from the lake, go back, uh, another, you know, twenty, twenty feet or whatever, you know, give more room in the second floor. So, but, you know, kind of help clear.
And I, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I, I do. Um, may I ask the board, um, what is the, uh, what's the intent of keeping?
Twenty-five, as, as you have, uh, as, as, as the board has stated, several members, um, expansion of a portion of the building. You know, and, and, and I, I'm kind of going back to if, this is the outline of, of the roof, regardless of height, and I'm not, I'm not trying to argue that I want to go higher than the peak and things like that. But I'm just saying that this is impervious.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? This is, this is the structure. And whether it's at eight feet, ten feet, fifteen, twenty, it doesn't change what's going on here. The, the other thing that I see is that by, um, you know, I feel my design of the, the, the rebuild, which I presented tonight, is actually better for the lake
Mm-hmm.
than, uh, what I have today. And also what limitations or the interpretation that has just been presented to me. Because it still has water coming off of my roof and going right at the lake. Whereas I, if I keep the peak throughout the entire footprint, front to back, I can better manage the water coming off of this structure. You know, um, can I, can I get your term, man?
Yeah.
I, I agree. Alright, but you got a law, you got a rule here, okay? And unfortunately, you know, in laws, the written rules are made, you know, rules are made off of laws. The, they're not perfect. So, yeah, you know, I, I used to work in, in regulatory business, insurance side of things, use a lot of the things, terms, grow. Unfortunately, you get to a point where, okay, given the area we're talking about, I could say, okay, go to, go to the legislators and get them to change, right? Well, you know, that, that, that takes a long time, yeah. But the rules and regulations, I'm not sure. But we gotta work within the, the, the rules we have, so, and what, and what we're trying to do, yeah, nah. And I understand what you're saying, you're absolutely correct.
And I also feel that the board has a degree of judgment on what makes the most sense, and what is the best interpretation, and what is the best for properties within the shoreline zone. On some things, but can I try to explain what I think is the rules? Just seeing this myself, what, what that one portion of this is about. What it's about is keeping tall buildings from forming on the, like, edge, like, it's visual, is basically what this, what this part of that ordinance is from. So, so we don't have tall buildings. Uh, trust me, if there's anything I could do to help you out, to get a building there, what you're proposing, how we do it. Um, but what that portion is, even though you're making, you're doing better for the lake, you're doing what that portion of this ordinance is trying to prevent, is tall buildings right on the edge of the lake. It's visual. And, and velocity of the.
Say that as well. It's probably the, um, most accurate description of what the rationale, other than that also, and that may not apply here, because you'll be doing it, but French Australians and stuff, but, uh, if you simply take a building and go from ten feet altitude to thirty foot, whatever, uh, twenty-five feet, you've got water coming out of the roof, or that higher rate, higher impact as well. Brown, so we can't, when the ordinance was developed and the guidelines were put forth, by the state, you can't anticipate everything somebody's trying to do, you have to put some rules together. And, uh, I guess I would, uh, one thing I disagree is, we don't have authority to use our judgment, if you will, to, uh, avoid height restrictions and things like that, because it may be better for the lake, we've got to follow the rules in front of us, and only the Board of Appeals can, um, and, and I'm not saying the Board of Appeals is the answer here, because I, I don't think it is. But only the Board of Appeals can wave, or if you back of a better word, grandvariances, uh, for different, uh, deviation from the ordinance.
And one of the only times we can use that judgment is when the word practical is being involved. Uh, then it does state that we have uh, judgment. It's only when the word practical, so we're gonna decide on what practical is, because it's not defined. Um, but that's the only time, but this is all defined. And we can't use that judgment on that. And trust me, I'm the one that would.
Let me, let me, let me pose another question to the board. Um, if I were to, to, um, rebuild uh, my current structure, you know, part, part of, the reason I'm doing this, obviously, is the building structurally, you know, is, is in better shape than I originally anticipated. And, you know, in, in front of the board, a little over a year ago, with a, um, with a plan to, uh, if you, the existing structure there, I was gonna take the, uh, the main box and go right over the kitchen and bathroom. You know, just extend, um, that peak out there, and put dormer on, the dormers on the back to give me a little bit more room for, you know, closet and, and, and whatnot up there. Um, you know, they, uh, which wasn't approved by the board, you know, a little over a year ago, but it.
But if, if I built exactly what I, what I have today, or what was approved, you know, a year ago, by the planning board, um, you know, would that be allowable? I mean, I, you know, in the sense of what you folks have talked about tonight.
Well, I was essentially asking, could you tear down a building and, rebuild the existing building?
But basically, the, the existing building, or even what was approved last year, uh, by the board, which really, um, uh, I, I, um, I was going out over, over the kitchen and bath, which is on the side of the home, uh, pardon me, the kit, yeah, kitchen and bath, which is on the side of the home, and raising the roof line and putting a dormer on the backside of the building. And beyond the twenty five foot mark, because I have that inside corner on, on the one side, um, we were virtually going to fill that in, uh, shy of a foot nine, I believe it was, um, to achieve ultimately the thousand square foot limitation, footprint for the ordinance. Um, and and and, you know, and and again, I think with that, uh, you know, I would have a very hard time managing, uh, the water coming off, you know, the, the lake side of the house. Because there's nowhere, because with all the pines, I won't put gutters up, I think that that's just full, full hardy, um. And we just have fifty percent of my roof line that go right in the lake, every rainstorm, every snowstorm.
I, I think, uh, to answer your question, I will, I will need to see the, those drawings, I was not here when you came and did that.
In short, yes, you still have a permit, you can still do that.
Oh.
It was approved.
It was approved.
And it's kind of such a start, because it did the garage, right?
Yes.
So, uh, no, it's not that.
Be approving a new, um, permit.
Proceeding with the one you already has, the second part of your question, though, is if you demolish the entire structure or most of the structure, current structure, and build it as it is now, same peak, same height at the lakeside, et cetera. Um, the, that addresses the issue that the twenty five percent, uh, within the twenty five feet in terms of an expansion, it address, or avoids that issue. It avoids the issue of the maximum height, what it doesn't avoid is, we would still have to make a decision on whether there would, and and, you know, if, based on what you've said, this may be a relatively easy decision, but, uh, whether or not it could be moved back to the greatest practical extent.
But you can remodel it and do whatever to your roof line, it's, uh, as long as you're not expanding within twenty five, well, you're out of permit, so you can do whatever you've been permitted, um. But if you were to deviate from that, um, we'd have to be cautious of anything within twenty five feet.
I, you know, I I very much appreciate your concern about water quality at the lake and and trying to deal with the stormwater runoff from your roof, uh, I really do. I I mean, it may not be quite as neat, but there are ways to do, deal with that coming off the, the lake side of, of, uh, the roof line there, off the, uh, main part of the camp and and the porch, you know. You know, things like, you know, capturing it in a gutter, but moving, sending the water to a rain garden, or an infiltration, uh, a, um, dry well, uh, so that it infiltrates into the ground rather than run across the, you know, seven to eight, ten, whatever the number is, uh, to the lake.
Thing my gutters, I'm getting old.
Yeah, uh.
I mean, gutters around here are, are almost non-existent because of the fact of all the pines that we have. No matter what you put up in the gutter, you're, you're up on the ladder and digging it out, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not practical.
I mean, you know, there are, it's, probably wouldn't work, uh, work quite as well, given your, in extreme proximity to the lake, but, you know, even putting in an infiltration, uh, trench, um, on that roof line, if a gutter's impractical for you, uh, would be better than nothing.
The problem is, is that, you know, underneath, whatever dust has accumulated, it's all rock. So you, you can't really dig into it, and I don't think anyone would want to dig in that close to the lake, um, to, to install a French train or something like that. Some of the pictures that I had on the front of the house, you know, there, there are big boulders right up in front of the house, so it would be, it would not be an easy thing or, it would be expensive.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
And I, I, you know, I don't want to start breaking up boulders.
Yeah, no, I see what you mean.
Or something like that. You know, I'm, I'm all for it, I just put one on the backside of my garage, so that we can manage the water better.
This, a fresh stone rain drip line would help, you know. And that would keep, it would be clean, so the splash, I mean, it would help, I mean, that's just.
It would, it would slow the rate of the flow, flow. But, I mean, it's a bad situation, there's no question about it, and there's not a lot of good ways to make it, um, better as is in its current location. Along with a lot of other camps and, you know, on the lakes.
We need to. We're not, we have to do the site review on.
Uh, well, all depends where Mr. Washington wants to do, you want us to come back with a new sign, you want us to go and visit you and still try to, um, uh, do changes to this application, you want to go to your old, old permit? You need to probably time to think about it.
No, I, no, I, I say, um. I think, perhaps, being, excuse me, my wife is, um, she's online, but she doesn't want to talk, um. I think I need guidance from the board as to what is really, what are my options?
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, based on the actual site, and I don't think doing it in, you know, in this meeting, is, is probably the best way to do it, and I think we need to understand, you know, the site, and then, and we, we walk through what kind of options I have, before I say, I either want to renovate it or rebuild it as is, or plan C, whatever that is.
So, and that's what I'm hearing, is that, um, you're trying to entertain from us having a side, a side visit?
Yes.
With you, okay, yes, will we offer that?
I am.
All right, so then it's open our cameras here and figure out when and when we visit.
But can I show you one more thing? Apparently to the overhangs, so when you measure your square footage, don't measure here. Measure out here, so capture all the square footage you can get, so that's where you're measured to, not here.
I, I understand what you're saying, okay.
So, we have all the week of the Queen's birth, on the twenty eighth of August. And then we are after that, in the first week of September, and our next meeting will be on the seventh of September. So I would, I think, Mr. Washington probably would envision that we go up to the Saturday before the next meeting.
If I may.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, time is of the essence for me.
Okay.
In the sense that, um, as a result of, as a result of a site, uh, visit, I have better guidance and, and confer with my wife as far as the options that you present, um, at that meeting. I need a little time to be able to, you know, maybe present something different at the first September meeting.
Okay.
And I'm also trying to get it done because, um, you know, I, I know it's not your problem, it's my problem, um, but if I'm going to rebuild, I need to be able to take it down, um, prepare the site.
Mm-hmm.
And get it staked out, um, so that, and I, and my builder has an opening in October, and everything takes time to happen, and if I can stay within that, uh, I would greatly appreciate it. But again, I know you, you folks have schedules of your own, but if we can do something maybe next week, uh.
So the question to ask to the board is, what, what is the earliest?
Well, we got a poster, right, so we can't do it within a week.
Okay, that's right, we have to announce it.
Ten day, we.
So we have a seven day window, isn't it?
What's the window, do you know?
There's a seven day announcement for the meeting.
For a site visit, we need at least.
If we have more, three or more people.
We talked about this, though, is it mandatory announcement, or is it preferred announcement?
It's a public meeting, so it's a mandatory announcement. If we have three or more people.
Shoot Mary a letter tomorrow, then chief, we announce it.
So, so, so if we decide, uh, today is the seventh, we can do it on the twenty fourth. The Thursday, next Thursday.
Seven days or ten days?
Seven days, I think seven days.
Whether seven or.
Seven, I may be wrong.
As in the statues are.
He didn't throw it over. No, it's a ban, planning board, MMA thing, right?
Well, it's, it's.
It's a state law.
That the manual.
It's the state law about public meetings.
I was just wondering if it was ending here or not.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
There's no other ordinance as far as.
I mean, the same law applies to the select words, and, you know, every other.
Uh, school board and, all, everything, that's public order, uh, boarding, boardings. So, main statutes.
Would be tall. Is that like the chateau thing, or?
So they have, they have their court partial head.
There's a, like you said, we got that in there. And I also, I feel like that are, that we.
Is your contractor in a position to help you answer some of our questions? Or is he not available?
This is the height you can go by, you are twenty five.
I know where he looked like. Yeah, so if I, if I needed them.
Because we're down on twenty five.
To attend.
Yeah, I, I don't know, uh, I was just thinking of, uh,
You're right.
You know, what's, what's the height of the existing structure at twenty five feet, you know, things like that, that we've discussed, you know, whether he would know those, the answers to those questions.
You know, the, um.
I mean, if, if some of these drawings were more to scale, you know, the profile is going down.
Twenty five feet.
The existing structure, I have.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. This is twenty five. We go from there back.
There is a scale on the. I think it's strictly wrote at twelve.
Yeah, but it doesn't show.
Whatever the debt.
Relative to the normal high water line of the lake, which is really what's at play here.
I mean, or, um, there would have to be.
Although, you're right, I mean, it could be calculated. It combined with your other, your site drawing, if, if that was the scale, I mean, I know it's the scale, but, like, I assume the red line is your approximation of, of, um.
You're saying?
Of where the new structure would be located.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's really all I did was I measured, uh, I, I know the distance of the existing structure, I measured this on this plan and did my best.
Right.
To get it, and literally, it's, it would be four, four feet farther back.
So this is four, four feet right here.
It's, it's actually three and a, you know, it's probably, I think the, the distance for.
Well, let, let me ask you another, a different question, do you have this at a full scale, at, at the true scale that it was drawn?
That is the true scale that it was drawn.
Really?
Because that was used in my last thing, and it, and it shouldn't have scale on it.
Yeah, no, it, it does, uh, somewhere, I think.
You know, when I print, you know, because I have a digital version of this, when I print it, it'll, you know, I can't print bigger than eight and a half by eleven.
See, my recollection is, we had this problem last time, because it was a, that, I, I think this is a reduction of the original drawing. And, because what I did was, I took, I figured out what the distance was for, that represented fifty two feet on your drawing. And by doing it as a ratio, uh, I came up with a scale of, uh, one inch on here is about, uh, forty seven and, uh, feet. That, you know, normally drawings aren't done that way, so.
I didn't do these drawings.
Yeah, no, I know you didn't, I, I was just trying to figure out if there was an easier way when we're doing our site visits, to answer some of the questions we've raised.
Oh.
And a, a, a true, to, a true scale drawing would, would be helpful. Right, right, I mean, we can work with what you've given us, don't misunderstand, we, we can make this work, it's just, um, um, you know, if you do what I did, you're coming up with an estimate of what the scale is, you're not coming up with the true scale.
So Joe, Joe Edwards did this.
Yeah, didn't we have this, like, exact same issue with last time?
But the next, did she do this one, yeah, she did this one too, yeah, so this scale right here is three sixteenths, not a quarter of an inch.
Yeah, and so I recalculated the scale on that too. And that, so one inch, I estimate that the scale on there, one inch equals nine feet.
Which would be, um, so, a quarter inch, four would be eight.
Because I was trying to answer some of these questions in my review before the meeting, and, 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 as you could tell, I couldn't.
So on the building, it's stated three sixteen.
Yeah, right, well, and, and, and the same with, I, I mean, the one drawing that, you know, helped a lot is yours, uh, uh, on here, because it's the true scale, but, um, the, uh, um, and this happens all the time, don't misunderstand, because we always get eight and a half by elevens, and, and so we were always having to recalculate the scale. Anyway, it, it doesn't matter, I mean, we can work with what you've given us, just.
I do.
I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, it, it, uh, maybe you, you could come out, um, and help me take some measurements on my own, um, and, you know, we could, we could determine the exact distance from the high water mark, we could, we could determine, you know, the height of the existing structure, and how far off the high water mark that is, et cetera.
And because, you know, I, I, I don't know my schedule on the day that we're talking about, so I don't know if I can make it or not. Unfortunately, I forgot to bring my calendar, but the, uh, um, but, you know, one of the measurements, if I was going, I would try to make would be, what is the height of the existing structure at twenty five feet? And then I would want to know from your profile drawings, what's the height of the proposed height at twenty five feet? And then also, I would compare that to the height of the closest of your existing camp, um, of the porch, edge of the porch to the lake, what's that height? And what's the height of the, the proposed height, uh, at the closest to, um, uh, it may, th- th- this may not matter, depending on where twenty five feet falls on your proposed structure, but, uh, what's the height at twenty foot, uh, at, uh, yeah, the closest to the lake, uh, on your proposed structure? Um, but the proposed, getting those for the proposed structures are based on these drawings.
I guess, you know, the existing.
Actually, maybe not, maybe not.
Because, again, this is, and directly from Hammond, that does have, um, it has height in it, and, and I stated earlier in this meeting, um, um, I now understand that, uh, the. The, the height of my proposed building is too high. Based on, I think everybody's understanding of the max site, which is not to exceed my current height, um, and I would. You know, I was told by my contractor that I could soften the, the pitch as Craig confirmed, um, to, to get, you know. Within the property, um, purely for this, um. But if, if we can just accept that for, for this argument, you know, the rest of it is. Pretty old money.
Would you be able to get from Jill Edwards, the full scale version of the, this drawing?
Again, that's the format that she provided it to me digitally.
See, I don't think this is the true scale drawing. I think it's a reduction.
I had a harder time reading that when I got it, you know.
Yeah, so you're in the same boat.
Get me something that was, you know, larger.
Yeah, right. You're in the same boat we are. All right, thank you. Just makes it hard. Can't make it, you know, it's hard to make, take measurements off of this.
I, I think there's.
Yeah, I, I use an engineering scale and I had a hard time.
Sorry guys, it's not showing on this statue and I wanna say that is, uh, seven days.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. I know it's not longer.
With that, at the same time, the ten number is ringing in our ears. I wanted just to do a check. Um, said notice meetings. But I've said as, uh, all provided in this chapter, written or printed notice stated, the time, place of each meeting of the members. Of the members and in the case of special meeting, the purpose or purposes for which the meeting is called. Must be given to each member, either personally or by mail, no less than ten days. Nor more than twenty, no more than twenty five days before the meeting, uh, made in the email, not as deemed to, uh. Uh, given by the deposit of the US, uh, uh, mail with purchase prepared. In the school board even a, a, um. Um, for more than three members.
I mean, one way to consider this is for our meeting tonight, public notice was provided last Friday.
That's right. But that's why I say it was ten, the seven days.
Well, it's seven days.
So let's, let's move on without that. So can we meet on the twenty fourth?
Again.
All right, what time?
Okay.
On the twenty fourth, we have one person. I can meet on the twenty fourth too. Thursday, next Thursday.
I, I, I just don't know at the moment, but I'll, um, would like to make it if I can. I know I can make it on Wednesday, but I don't know my schedule on Thursday.
Now, what time?
Fourth is my anniversary and I'm not sure what my wife has planned.
I like four o'clock.
Four o'clock, whatever time is coming in for you.
I can make four.
Four o'clock on the twenty fourth. We have a date and a time.
Sir, I will email you to let you know once I get home.
Sure.
If I can make it.
I don't know. Whatever the, the, the come up. You'll send an email out, right?
Four P M this far.
Okay.
All right, and I will send an email back.
John, I can be out there earlier next week.
Yeah.
I'm bringing really heavy.
I, I didn't, I was trying to listen and convert, um. I just wanna make sure that one of us knows the que, the, the distance question that the board has mentioned again, um.
We cover everything.
Uh, Hans, you want me to send this note to, to Mary tomorrow morning to send it out?
I will put it on the website. I mean, I thought that both of us see. Legs of the fish.
So then, uh, I, uh, since. That, uh, uh, we're gonna have to place a motion to table this application. So entertain a motion to table the application.
I'll make a motion that we table to spot their application, uh, pending a site visit, uh. And to whenever, um, puts it back on the agenda.
All right, I need a second.
All certain.
All right, so we're gonna vote Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And me, so I also vote yes, so we, uh, table in the application.
Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Obviously, I look like we're trying to post roadblocks in front of you, but we're not.
To me, you're doing the best that. You're trying to do your job and I may have a difference of opinion on, on certain things, but. My objective is to get an approval that is allowable under the ordinance and. I, I think the logical next step that you all have agreed is to have a site visit and so, and we can understand. The site and, and what I'm allowed to do and, and I'm telling my wife and I to go over there. And I appreciate the time.
Wonderful, thank you.
I spent six years on the, on the Roman planning board by under the.
So. Hopefully it won't rain. Question about.
I have plenty of them.
Hosting the meeting, we're strictly saying, posting that we're going to have a special meeting. We do not have to say what the agenda is.
That's right. It's just, it's just type business. That's the purpose. Type business.
Okay. I can put it on the website tonight now.
Oh.
Do that much.
Sure.
You, whatever else.
So you're planning for site visit at that location for a clock, that's it?
But I believe we have to physically post it also at the post office, right?
I think so.
Would we post these meetings at the post office?
Yeah, I honestly don't know. I don't know.
Check with Mary anyways.
Yeah, just check, yeah, Mary.
You just wanna give me a call or you don't need to call you on Monday and see what.
I mean, I'd say tomorrow, but it's gonna rain. I don't know, so if you're around, it looks, it looks good, I'm like.
I live here, so, uh. And I believe you, you should have a phone number on.
I do, I do.
So here. You got the time tomorrow? Just give me an hour.
I'll have time tomorrow if the weather looks good, I'll come over there.
Give me an hour and make sure I'm there.
All right, good night.
Thank you.
See ya next week.
So we move in now in the agenda, uh, to all business. And, uh, we're gonna be tackling that third wall housing act.
Break, I think took a break. Should we take a?
I'm in a break at eight forty five.
Lewis.
Yeah.
You mentioned one time that you wondered whether you needed to. Maintain or. A particular ordinance, uh, that you're starting. Other ordinance that we developed, that was that's a mighty family dwelling ordinance. I remember one time saying, I don't know who you're meeting.
Oh, I, when we were doing, uh, redoing the subdivision ordinance, I had. Put out a proposal that we get rid of the multi-family dwelling unit ordinance for apartment buildings and that kind of thing. Condos and, and incorporate like the heads. What few things were in there that weren't already in the subdivision ordinance and you do away with that ordinance in its entirety.
Well, I was reading through it, very digging and copying. And I was kinda coming up with the same idea. I'm thinking. What, what are we really accomplishing here anymore with, with the subdivision ordinance and stuff? Anyway.
Yeah, I, I, my recollection, uh. So when I was on, on the plane, we're back in the nineteen eighties. A couple of the, uh, a couple of the apartment buildings, we approved a couple of the apartment buildings in town, like the one, uh. Uh, near the bill, well, beyond the Chandler Road on the right, uh. On twenty seven, uh, that was, uh.
Yay.
That was the days.
Yeah, yeah.
Built that and then, um. Down by the depot, that was, what's his name? That one, the print shop, um.
Stewart.
Yeah, Stewart, uh, goes to, and. Um, I think, I don't remember which one came first, but I think that ordinance was a function. Of earlier's, you know, apartment proposals, you know. Um, I mean, I would want to order anything back then, of course, I wouldn't even have Belgrade in the, in the nineteen seventies, but.
In reviewing it, I did find some things that I was like, hmm, we got a multi-family dwelling ordinance. And it talks about as in the, if, in the purpose or whatever somewhere as defined below. And then there's no multi-family dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, definition, it's multi-unit house.
Multi-unit, yeah, no, there's, there's some problems with it and construction movement. I think besides the fact that I think it's conflicted with those.
So, um. There's any, uh, George, I had asked here, uh, um. If, if beyond, I think that this whole thing is being pushed in the state house. Because we have a big, uh, aging population in the United States. So, uh, part of the big problem that this country is facing is there's not gonna be enough nursing homes for everybody. For sure.
Yeah.
And this, this whole thing is constantly going a lot because you want to make the government Medicare, Medicaid, whatever it is. And the governor have to pay for you when you're old. Your, your kids are not putting money in.
And the same thing on the opposite spectrum where kids can't afford to buy anything right now. The prices and everything's so skyrocketing right now.
They come to them.
They can't, they can't afford to buy.
Yeah.
And you gotta take care of the elderly as, as well. So I think it's on both sides of scale.
Yeah.
That, uh.
So they, I mean.
And we have a lack of housing.
Yeah.
A total lack of housing for everybody, you like, pal.
So it's interesting.
That, uh. It, it's the, the interest rate, uh, you know. The amount of money you're putting into your payment that has nothing to do with bringing down your.
The principal, yeah, it's all just the interest.
I'm glad I'm not trying to get along right now.
Well, thanks, love it. That seems so. I remember when I was a kid. Wasn't at one point interest rate like twenty two percent or twenty seven or something, pushing close to that. Way back, forty years ago, thirty, forty years ago.
Yeah, seventy four.
Things are, I remember really high interest rate back then.
It was about. And eighteen was, uh, I remember ready to get a school Elizabeth before or something like that. Um, there, there was one of them times when they placed and we're going up like, like a year.
I was working on that.
It's my time to go to bed. Let's go to our arms.
Oh, ready to sleep.
So this is gonna be sweet. I think.
I started at eight o'clock.
So, uh, I think everybody probably saw the memo that Mr. Steel put together. Um, that was summarizing and crunching the information in this pack, right? So, um, I went already, I think it's very well done. Uh, it highlights the, uh, main items that we're gonna be, uh, facing K D C O with. And I don't know if anybody has something else to add to it or any questions, uh, from Andy, because I think it's very much straightforward. I mean, we're literally with this document. And I will do the same. I just can put a, uh, uh, summary as I do at the time here. But, uh, I'd be ready with my items and I have a few questions, uh, uh, from it. And, um, so, um. We, in regard to Mr. Shield memo, does anybody have questions about it?
One thing I would just note, I, I, I tried to note where it looked to me like, at least I had questions that we were gonna. I, I needed help from K D C O to answer or, or maybe from Hans as well, uh. That were like interpretations of the plumbing code or the minimum, the state minimum one size law, um, but, um. But that's fine because that's really what the purpose of this is, is to help us identify what questions we need help with from K D C O.
All right, I hear that we don't have a question, Mr. Baker? Your questions a lot.
One of the things that I, and I, I'm not suggesting that. I don't know if I do this or anything, but as I was reading the, uh. One that says you need a. And I, I don't know what he probably has in the answer. But, uh, where your needs allow at least one A D, you don't want to spend same lot. I wonder if there would be towns that, or maybe you can't, there's something to prohibit it. Not have them get around it. If they truly wanted the town or the citizens or whatever, that we're not going to. In ten years, we're not gonna. Well, essentially having a second dwelling here on a lot, we're gonna increase the lot, the minimum lot size. Instead of one acre, we got two acres and we're gonna keep the same density of development, if you will. Uh, what, what does prevent a town from doing that? Does anybody?
There's a provision in here that you cannot change your mineral lot ordinance. To get around.
Yeah, so, so, uh, if it. Would continue to apply though, it's so, uh, an A D U would be exempt from. Town specific minimum lot size ordinance and other dimensions if they're greater than the state minimum lot size. Uh, uh, law. And that law really only deals with lot size and it's all based on s- amount of sewage generated. And so for a single family residence, the state minimum, or, you know, town minimum, Belgrade's forty thousand square feet, the state minimum is twenty thousand square feet. And if you do the math, um. And correct me if I'm wrong about this, Hans, uh, if you add an additional bedroom under the state law, you only have to add another eight thousand square feet of. Lot area.
Mm-hmm.
So you could have a pretty small, a pretty small lot, you know, in South Portland or wherever. And, and, uh, an A D U would be allowed under it, maybe just with one bedroom.
Well, well, this gets really twisted. It's, um. The question you asked me earlier about that handout and the one town said. No detached.
Yeah.
Okay, so in section three, the dwelling unit and now allowance. Um, subsection B, C. Which is, would pertain to us, if a lot contains one existing dwelling unit. A municipality must allow the addition of up to two additional dwelling units. Now, listen, this is where it gets tricky. One within the existing structure or attached to the existing structure, sure, okay? One detached from the existing structure or one of each. Now, where your sewer line, uh, rules come into play is. This isn't like if you turn your garage into an apartment, it's not like adding one more bedroom. It's an apartment. So instead of adding a ninety gallon per day for a bedroom, you need to add a hundred and twenty gallons per day. For the apartment, that's the, you know, apartment rule. So it's a greater septic expansion. If they do two bedrooms, it would be a hundred and twenty plus ninety. So you're two hundred and ten gallons per day addition. So, and then if you did that, you could also add a detached. So you can put a septic, septic system to handle. So you can put a separate septic system to handle both expansions. So it, it's a convoluted. There's a lot to think about when, when this happens.
And the easy. Those numbers come from the state plumbing code, right?
Yep.
So it's ninety gallons per bedroom.
For a bedroom.
And hundred and twenty for a bar.
Hundred and twenty per apartment for the first bedroom.
For the first bedroom.
For one bedroom and the additional bedroom will be an additional ninety gallons. So if you did an apartment garage and then a detached, you're looking at. Was it four hundred and twenty gallons?
And, but that goes into. The determination of whether the existing system can handle that waste or a new system. What, what, how a new system has to be designed, but it, it doesn't. The plumbing code itself doesn't specify what the lot size needs to be, right?
It doesn't.
It, it's just.
Accommodated, but the state says twenty thousand per dwelling unit.
Right.
If you had a house and you added an ADU to it, you should have forty thousand square feet.
Well, we're gonna have that minimum minimized, right? Well, you're saying.
We are.
Yeah, we are. So as far as the septic goes, I don't see any problem with that. I mean, as long as they have a properly designed septic, that's gonna handle it. Um, too cold, um. It was.
Well, um, yeah, I, I don't pretend to, I mean. Understand the interplay between the state plumbing code and the state minimum lot size or, uh, law. Uh, cause they're both have, and I think they have different. Uh, assign different, uh, values for the amount of gallonage per bedroom. Sound alike from what you just.
Well, the difference would be the kitchen. They're allotting thirty gallons a day, you know, the kitchen, the dishwashing, food prep.
I see.
Coffee down the drain, kind of stuff.
Yeah, a- and this, actually, that points out a, an important point. If you go to the definitions. That, uh, the Department of Economic and Community Development used, and I presume they came from the law. Uh, some of them, including the definition of an accessory dwelling. Differs from say, what we typically use in shoreline zoning. Uh, so, you know, we're gonna have to adapt to that. It's gonna get a little, I think, might get a little confusing. But, but the good news is, um. We have enough flexibility to, you know, to like come up with a definition that makes sense to us. Um.
And shoreline, shoreline's not involved in this.
No, no.
Have to do much.
No, we don't have to do it. Same with it.
Things, yeah. And, um, so we're just dealing with regular laws.
Yeah, we do our, I mean, we're dealing with most of town, but.
Yeah.
But we're not dealing with the shoreline.
Yeah, right. This is why I've been trying to. For months, get definitions in our heads that we can all work with, but, um, this is mostly gonna affect. Um, our minimum lot size ordinance, because subdivisions already have covenants and this does not. Supersede subdivision covenants that have always been approved by plan boards.
Right.
So. Subdivisions, kind of.
Well, I didn't read anywhere where it even had to be approved by the, uh, plan board, it just has to be in the registry of deeds.
Okay.
There's the coverage.
Yeah, yeah.
So subdivisions are kind of.
I mean, I think I use the example like in a lot of subdivisions, because most subdivisions have them that we've. Approved, or our predecessors approved.
So a lot of the topics that are open for discussion, I created that worksheet. To get the brain sticking and, and these are.
I, I found that helpful. I also found the, the examples from the other town helpful as well.
Yeah.
And some of those other towns, you can see where they've got holes.
Yeah.
That we don't wanna fall into.
Yeah, because they're basically CDs.
Yeah.
The examples are here.
So, yeah, I mean, most of the, maybe all of those precede this law, so. You know, a number of those towns, for, for all of them, almost probably are gonna have to redo their ordinances as well.
And we need to think down the road of. You know, this is what somebody's doing today, but when they pass away, the kids inherit it, what's gonna happen to it?
Hmm.
Are they gonna turn both of these residences into rental properties? So the owner occupancy issue is something we have to be long sighted on.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Even if it is, like, how can we tell you? So they can inherit a property, oh, you can't rent that out, you gotta live there. I'm struggling with that one.
Exactly.
Just telling them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, we have a provision for that, is if you inherit or it's new ownership.
Even if you sell it. You gotta tell somebody they can't rent their place out.
Oh, I know.
And that's like martial law.
I'm not saying that, but if you're gonna rent, you will have to have a maximum number of people. Because that's, that's determined by the, by the, um.
Well, and the other thing is, they say you can't create a parking ordinance, but our streets aren't safe for parking on the street.
Yeah.
Yes, that's gonna have to go in this one. If we are allowing this, we're gonna have to run parking, for sure.
Yeah, but we can't, no, that's right.
It starts right in if we can't.
Yeah, well, we've created enough street side parking.
I thought there was a. I, I was reading this thing.
A lot of towns have parking requirements, but the, um, these regulations in the law are pretty clear that. We're not allowed to, uh, add parking requirements to an AD, for an ADU.
For an ADU.
Why I missed.
For an ADU, not if some, not for like.
Street side parking.
Yeah, not for, you know, condos or apartment building or. Or any of those kind of things.
So I, I.
Or even a duplex.
I'll talk a little bit about this here, and what I got out of this is that. Uh. This thing is, uh. The way it states are looking into the concept that we're gonna have a big age. Aging population and then also the problem that we have with our poor housing or certain, and the way they're trying to, uh. Uh, accommodate that is by putting some regulations, uh, on the building of ADUs. So, uh, the vision of this is to have a relative living in it. Or have a caretaker that help people, your kids or your elders in it. Uh, and then for many people to provide additional income. Okay, this is, and we, we're going to the swim of the Airbnb here to.
So it's additional income, but it's not just, um. I don't see it as just, uh. Family, I mean, they're just trying to provide housing.
Yeah.
Having housing.
Yeah.
So there's nothing in here that says it's gonna be for family.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it can be for anybody.
Yeah, it literally is.
So they're just trying to provide housing, that's the biggest thing for all this, is trying to provide housing.
Mm-hmm.
So, it doesn't mean it has to be for your grandma, grandpa, doesn't mean it has to be for your kid.
No, I mean, it could be for the kid that works at Conservation Corporation, Seven Lakes Alliance.
So, so, um, you're right on that and, but also the, the vision, these are the main visions. To provide affordable housing while preserving community character and saving tax dollars. Now, how we save tax dollars if we add, we do this? How we save tax, tax dollars?
You know, you're losing tax dollars, but.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I will struggle with that one.
You know, where they're probably thinking of more urban towns where. Um, the, um. By, uh, uh, or maybe they're heading in the direction of the view, uh, in a more urbanized or suburban, um, town. Where if you keep the development, that, including residential development more compact, there's lower. Costs for services like road maintenance.
Okay, gotcha.
Road development, public drinking water supply, that kind of thing.
Gotcha.
Uh, but, but that, we don't provide much for services.
So then the other, the other reason, they have, uh, four more reasons. Uh, one of them is allow the elderly to live independently, because they will be next to a family. Uh, create neighborhoods diversity and stability. Um, and, uh, uh. Basically, when the state establishes economic affordability, because people will not wanna have to get into mortgages and that kind of thing. Uh, the other reason is to make efficient use of existing housing. So, um. Meaning that, for instance, the heat of the house can be channeled to this. Or, or share where this extra space has been created, um. So. That, and then the last one is create income, basically, provide supplemental. So, uh, the, uh, the, the big thing of the rest of the read out here, um. It is that there's, there's gonna be a concern from the neighborhoods that, that. There's gonna be more transient and there will be more traffic. And in this, and this is getting moving up, so the concept of parking is gonna come.
I haven't noticed.
In the, in the picture, um. So then the ordinance provision demonstrated some of the key elements for the community to consider. In an accessory unit provision are, these are the things to consider. Occupancy, so how many people we're gonna allow in that house now. And we're gonna have a, a rule that there, by each, this much square feet, we're gonna have ten people or. Five people living in that space.
That's not enforceable.
I will, this is the thing, I found that odd, but it's enforceable when. The change of ownership happens and we have to revalid the, the sewer system.
Yeah, how many marijuana plants are growing in the White House on the corner of Goetel Road? We can't control that either.
So, um. Occupancy, the size.
By people anyways, it goes by bedrooms. So. It doesn't go by the amount of people living in the place, it goes by the amount of bedrooms.
Alright, so then, uh. Then the size or, or limit of, of, of the, uh, size limit of the, of the dwelling unit. Uh, whether it's gonna be attached or it's gonna be separate, detached, uh, parking. And design standards, and when I read, I read this. Uh, some, some degree of standards to ensure neighborhood compat- compat- compatibility. So I thought about Mr. Scott Finley. When I read that, so I don't know, uh, uh, how much, if we, you know, we're in good timing, because, uh, supposedly it's gonna be coming here. Sometime in September. Uh, so that will be, I think, to me, we align, listen to what he has to say. Uh, so things that the community are gonna be thinking of and limiting the occupancy to just relatives. I don't know how you can enforce that either. Uh, allowing, uh, rental units to non-family members. And, uh, we cannot enforce either way, and it is what it is. Uh, then some will be seasonal, some will, some will be short-term re- rentals that, and that comes the, the Airbnb concept. Uh, and, but we're living down here for the summer, basically, and we have a lot of people moving in just for the summer. Uh. Uh. But basically, the whole thing, a process also planned that we got in the minds of people. Who may be thinking of their own retirement or that of the other aging parents. So a lot of this effort is geared to that, um. Neighborhood associations, churches, agencies on aging and housing, transportation providers. Will be all good partners in this process. So, um. I don't know how much help we can do to, we have one church in town. Actually, more than that, we have three or four.
Four, five.
Yeah.
We have two, three, four.
Yeah. Uh.
Five, we have five.
Five, so inviting the leaders of this, uh, groups here. To, uh, be aware of this law assignment. Uh, or we can, I don't know, we, we, we can send them letters or I, I think a meeting with them here. Just to, to talk over it or inviting them to, to zoom to our meeting will be a, a, a good gesture. Uh. I don't know of any, uh, agencies of, on aging in here in town. Besides the, uh. We, we have a.
County committee.
Yeah, town committee.
Plus a new mayor vote, we could share.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, do we have neighborhood associations? We have road associations, but not, uh, neighborhood associations that I know of.
Yeah, squeaky wheels all over town.
Alright, so then, going through the scale, this is one thing really, it's, uh, uh. Do you go through it and the first thing I, I know it's about the two, you need the mostly, uh, cities. And then the big thing for me is, you know, ADU allows size. So they, they play with that, they, with determining how big these ADUs are gonna be. Whether they're gonna be attached or not. Or allowed to be attached, detached, and then who's gonna occupy, occupy, uh. Who's gonna be living in it? So, um. Why will deny detached units? That we have, there's two, two communities here that don't allow detached units. Why a community would not?
Well, like. You know, more densely populated towns, the Portland suburbs. Quarter acre, you know, twenty thousand square foot lots, and they've got four thousand square foot houses on them. Were they gonna make a doghouse? You know, it's, they don't have the room, so they may deny it and say. You know, well, these houses, if you have a garage, you can create a space, you can build onto your house, but the idea of creating a separate one. And again, the septic expansion thing, if you're looking at somebody who wants to build another hundred and twenty gallons, when people build houses, they don't. Upsize their septic field, they build it to this requirement that they need to handle this house. They don't put in septic fields for the planet, I'm gonna expand another two bedrooms in five years, so I need to make a bigger. Septic system, they just wait till it's time and they do it then.
Hmm.
So, again, space requirements, what town was that that?
That was Alfred and interestingly, Cap- Capitolis. Both of them say no.
Capitol Elizabeth is very rocky, you know?
Ah.
Probably out of municipal system.
Where's the Alfred?
I have my own theory, but Capitol is a good place. I had nothing to do with that wrong. It has something a lot to do with soundings.
Where's the Alfred? Where's that?
Uh, southwestern, maybe. Out near. Kind of on the way to Sanford.
Oh, okay. That's what a country is, isn't it? That's pretty sandy out there.
It is pretty sandy.
So, so I get to my point would be, if we have to go through that, those three questions. Do, would, would the board be in favor of having detached units, allowing detached units?
I, I was talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, off the top of my head, I see no reason why they can't be, uh, detached or attached.
Yeah.
I, I think we're gonna have a lot more freedom than some of the denser developed towns. And, uh. I mean, the, the. The issue, one of the issues, and I don't even, you know, at this point. It's too early for me to say what issues might even be of concern to me, to me. And with, the one, the one that has kind of captured my attention only because of some news coverage I've seen. About ADUs in like the mid-Atlantic states, like, uh, Virginia, Maryland, uh, New Jersey. Where apparently there's a phenomenon, and I have, I would have never guessed this would have even occurred, but apparently there's some real estate corporations going around. Buying single-family homes and then putting an ADU out in the backyard. Uh, and then turning them both into rental properties. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't know how I feel about that, but you know, and maybe, so what, you know?
Well, it's gonna run the price of housing up, actually.
Well, that's, that's the problem, and it, this was in the context of people not being able to afford the rents.
The other thing we need to consider is shoreline zoning does not apply to this, but you get a shoreline zoning lot that has. Extra square footage behind two hundred and fifty feet.
It's going to apply there.
They can put one in there.
Yeah.
Do you, can you rerun that again, do that again?
Shoreland zone lot that has, that goes beyond two hundred and fifty feet from the water source.
Yeah.
They can put an accessory dwelling on there. Cause they're outside of the shoreline on that piece of.
That's a good example, though, of something to think about, too, cause uh. You know, one of the things I don't know what to think about, or I uh I'm. Kind of in agreement with Craig, I'm fine with rentals, generally speaking, the only question I have is. Are um short-term rentals appropriate for the this particular instance, and I I don't know how I feel about that at this point, but um. But you know, that example, you know, how's that different than renting the camp on it? Airbnb or through one of the realtors?
I guess one of my thoughts would be very different to me, I mean. You know, camp rentals. And then for the water, it's it's already there, so who, you know, limits to the full time or short-term rentals, but. I'm not sure I would think the same about. Short-term rentals, uh residential property. Uh but I guess the element of shoreline zone, I guess, the other part of it is saying, what's wrong with doing it? On a guy's personal property.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it's how you define short-term rentals, because um. You know, when people rent cottages, they'd rent them for a week at least.
Yeah.
Short-term rentals can be just three or four days for a bachelor party. You know, where you're ready, holy hell.
And that's where we heard the complaint.
Yeah, right, down on Lecturer Drive, um and um. Uh and you know, that those are the kind of examples you hear about in the news, like in South Portland.
So then your first one is on. Owner occupied principal or access to this unit. So if um so the principal unit. Have to be occupied by the owner. Or I guess it can be rented as well. Do we have restrictions about that? I think I I I will say not required for me.
I don't see how you could tell someone they have to live there. You know, so they were living there. And they built a place for the parents, parents die, so they moved back to wherever. And you're gonna tell them they can't rent anything out because.
Well, and how would the town force that?
Yes.
We can't.
Marshall block.
So I will say not required.
Not stay in this house.
That's that, being occupied by the owner of the principal unit, it's always saying the requirement, we will have the requirement.
If the owner dies or somebody uh doesn't wanna buy the property, it's like. Help buy it and then rent it out.
Now, um. The part that I have a real struggle with, understanding. Uh what kind of energy use is the ADU allowed size? I don't know how to go along with that.
What was that?
The the this uh uh accessory apartments or accessory units. Um. What is gonna be the size?
Or the maximum size.
The maximum size. Uh there's something about the eight hundred square feet. Uh availability, um so. Everyone will be no more than seventy-five percent of the principal dwelling. Or eight hundred square feet maximum plus two hundred square feet of debt maximum.
If it's like whichever is left.
Whichever is less.
Yeah, something like that.
I mean, it is supposed to be an accessory, it's not supposed to be a second. Uh primary structure, uh primary residence.
So my question would be.
And you end up with a small house and all of a sudden they got this.
Bigger, a bigger house, a bigger ADU in the house.
Well, that's the thing to consider, it's, you know, you've got some older houses around here that are two bedrooms. Small living room, kind of like old millhouses.
Right.
They might be nine hundred square feet. Well, if we have a twelve hundred square foot mass. Somebody might say, well, I wanna build a twelve hundred square foot house now, and I wanna live in it and turn the other one into the ADU.
Oh, interesting.
I mean, it's, it's kind of like. We create the parameters, but.
What's the problem with that?
There isn't, I don't see it, but we gotta just create these parameters. And again, we're allowing the two dwellings. But, alright, now the twist, let's say they build a twelve hundred square foot house. And they put an attached garage on it, on an ADU. And then can they turn that into an ADU? They end up having a three on one lot.
Oh, it's gonna get complicated.
So you have a small house.
This is the same one I wanted.
You build a twelve hundred square foot house with an attached garage. And then you turn the garage into another dwelling unit.
Well, you can only have two, right, ADUs?
No, you can have three, and then one attached, one detached.
So you have two.
In general.
One attached, one detached, but can you make the two afterwards? Backwards.
Well, no, I mean, we allow the two, so there's no expansion to an ADU, that's pretty simple. Not, there's no, we can state it as. Uh it cannot add on to an ADU, uh cannot make a another ADU from an ADU.
So you cannot have an attached garage.
Well, I don't care about the garage myself, but so.
So we already have a rule there, we cannot make an ADU out of an ADU.
Right. Something similar to that.
But the scenario, yeah, okay, that's. These are all these things, that's why I made the worksheet, something to think about, start going into blanks, but you don't feel like.
So the sweet spot, again, contend to compress all the concepts of all the all the towns together. The sweet spot is something between five hundred square feet, no more than a thousand square feet. That's that's a sweet spot between the defining the maximum. And then they talk about a forty percent to a fifty percent to a seventy-five percent of the original of the principal structure. If anything between forty to eighty percent of the original structure, not going beyond five to a thousand. So those are basically the numbers that we got narrowed down. Forty percent. Actually, uh it even goes to a hundred percent.
Yeah, cause if you have a small house.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think the percentage, you toss that out.
So.
Come up with a fix.
That that whatever is minimum of a forty to a hundred or. Anything between five hundred, five hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. Whatever it comes to be the minimum.
Well, the state minimum was one ninety.
I was ninety?
Yep.
They limit.
Minimum.
Minimum, yeah, the minimum is.
I don't think we can make the minimum greater than that, since that's the state already.
So that's the minimum right there, with the maximum with anything between five hundred to a thousand.
So six hundred square feet, basically, is twenty-four by twenty-five.
Small.
That's small.
Yeah, it is small. That's on me, twelve hundred.
That's all.
You know, forty by thirty.
You need one man.
Size of the room.
You don't need one man, two elderly people? Well, that's not for elderly people, you can't go without mindset.
Well, I except those towns, you know, may have, that's what their goal was, you know, to limit it that way.
You gotta think about where it's gonna end up.
Yeah.
Not where you want it to be.
Hans, I got a question for you, where did you come up, find uh that uh it has to be two. Uh ADUs, uh the my reading of this uh. Regulation from uh economic community development is at least one, it doesn't have to be. Two.
That's not like two of those.
No, I didn't say it has to be two, you you are allowed to.
Oh, that you are allowed.
Okay, so you can be more aggressive than this rule.
You can have one attached and one detached. Or one of the.
Well, only if we decide that.
Right.
Not because of this rule.
So you can have two detached or two two attached for one of each. Oh.
Section three. Well, we have yet to decide that. Under this rule, don't misunderstand, this rule doesn't say we have to do that.
But we can.
But we could.
I don't think we could.
It all says we have to allow at least one.
Well, yeah, it's actually three requirements, so when you allow the.
So I'm looking under section two on page. Uh six, uh page ten, at least one accessory dwelling unit must be allowed on any lot where a single-family dwelling unit is the principal structure.
Okay, now go to the next, go to section three, see. If a lot contains one existing dwelling unit, then you make the two.
You're in section three?
Yep.
Yeah, that's that's where, that's for a different entirely different scenario, that doesn't apply to ADUs. That's for uh uh like condo developments, apartment buildings. That's allow, you know, multiple dwelling units on on lots, uh but not for specific to ADUs.
So do I know allow?
Uh ADUs?
Yeah.
If we decide that, but we have to provide for one.
Okay.
Uh it could be attached, it could be detached, it could be a apartment, you know, uh. But um but we don't, there's nothing that says that we have to allow two.
Okay.
You don't actually allow two, you're moving towards one.
I would be two. If if it's gonna be truly an accessory dwelling unit.
I think we allow to, we then put a a explosion here of Airbnb.
Yeah. This is an accessory to. Magnify just one.
Yes, it it goes beyond. Most of the uses that those are intended for.
I see what this reads the same, George. This is talking about affordable housing, that's the general rules.
What section are you on?
I'm two in sections three, I believe, they're kind of reading the same, I don't see who are one.
Um. So ADU is different than a multiple dwelling unit. And section three applies to mo- multiple dwelling units.
Yeah.
And section four a applies to ADUs.
Okay, and a multiple dwelling unit would be your primary residence with an ADU in the garage. They both apply.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure, I, it'd be a good question for Katie Carr.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought of that way, you know, that kind of a loophole.
Because that's what they're talking about here on section C is one existing dwelling unit.
Oh, multi-family dwelling uh have to contain three or more dwelling units.
Yes. But again, if a lot contains one existing dwelling unit, a municipality must allow addition of up to. Two dwelling units, okay, skip that and look at the criteria. One with existing structure or attached to the existing structure.
Yeah, well, let's sort this out with Katie Carr.
We'll vote.
Cause I'm not sure I see it that way, but but let's, you know, we're gonna need to figure it out.
Now, the other question we have with Katie Cup is that what are the provisions for? Drinking water, this thing is gonna revolve up, uh how that.
It's very stuffy there, wasn't there stuff in there?
Yeah, yeah, it's. Kind of daunting, I think, um. Um because rather than relying on the state drinking water standards, they're relying on federal. And I I'm gonna have to look into that a little bit more, but last I knew, some, those are extensive. And um and plus they also added in, and I don't blame them for doing this, but it's there's a practical problem with it, the uh PIFAs. And uh the so-called forever chemicals, there's um. One, I've learned since I drafted this, that there are actually two labs now, I mean, that. Analyzing PIFAs for private individuals, most of them will only do it for the state. Or municipalities, but um. Uh one is in in Norwich Walk, it's a brand new one, and and one's down in Scarborough, Caton. Uh environment laboratories, that was the one I didn't know about. Um but still, too, you know, there's a lot of these. What kind of, is that gonna create a a backlog or a problem? I I don't, you know, I don't really know, but.
Yeah.
I mean, the the cost for water sample could be expensive. Which seems to me something beating to us, you know, it seems like it could be a narrower list.
It's expensive. A lot, a lot, a lot, a lot.
Well, your typical, the cheapest drink that you do for, you know, basic real estate transaction, which is. Uh E. coli, uh uh other bacteria, um nitrates and nitrites. Uh is around a hundred twenty bucks. And no, it's not expensive, that's not expensive relatively speaking, if you add arsenic, another twenty bucks. Uh still not expensive, but PIFAs might cost you a thousand bucks alone.
Oh.
That's get, that's expensive.
Yeah, right, okay, yeah.
Now, probably that price will come down over time.
Over time, inflation.
Well, I I meant from competition. You may be right, though.
They all play golf.
You may be right.
They all play the game.
Alright, I think we've already got this pad down, we're most far from this one, the first pass. So is there anything? And uh. Uh. The multi-family dwelling ordinance, Mr. Baker. That you think uh will not wrap around this this new law that we have to deal with or. That we have to uh uh change in that ordinance to make it. Pathable to these new rules?
Lot area, there'll be one acre for each building plus one half acre for each bedroom in the building.
What pitch is that?
Age two.
Pitch two.
It's uh. Don't need all the fine criteria, most of them are doing. I'm sure how. It it seems like uh. The area. Required here may be more than what would be uh necessary for the accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, and uh we don't need to change existing ordinances like subdivision law or multi-family. Dwelling units to accommodate this.
I'm not so sure about that. Um I'm not, I I don't, I'm not talking about this, I this ordinance, I'm not so sure that it might not need to be changed.
Yeah, I I think it's standard one.
Maybe just. If you follow through with the requirements of this ordinance, it certainly could, this ordinance itself could prevent second dwelling unit uh. Based on some of the requirements there.
Yeah. Man, I I should say, I I really don't know, um. That was. That was sort of, anyway, go ahead, Richard, sorry.
Well, that that I don't make for sure, is gonna be an issue. Because uh lot area shall be one acre for each building plus. Ha- uh one half acre for each bedroom in the building.
Yeah, and these rules don't require for these kind of facilities we're talking about now, any change to our lot area or other dimensional. Requirements, so that that, Hans is correct about that.
Our multi, our subdivision and multi. Unit dwellings can stand the eyes wide on. This is strictly about single. Family dwellings, residential lots. So it's a minimum lot size.
Um. But then the hence, then if you have a single family unit and you have an ADU and you move around. But then, uh, the hence, then if you have a single family unit and you have an ADU and you move a multi-family there. That, so that would not, that would not mean that the multi-family dwelling?
No, as George said, multi-family is three or more.
Mm-hmm.
So if we have one, uh, three or more already in existence, we don't add another one as an ADU.
And if we allow only one per. Lot. Yes. Accessory dwelling, then, um.
That's it, right.
So this talks about, uh, I guess, uh, lot area shall be one acre for each building plus one half acre for each bedroom. Um.
With three families.
There were.
Three families or more.
Right.
Pardon me?
It's for three families or more.
Yeah, yeah.
So that is one, is a different group completely. And this one is a single family.
Yeah, yeah, and this is all, this whole thing is about one accessory dwelling unit to be located on the same lot as a single family dwelling.
Yeah, so we're good then.
And, but we can also make restrictions or regulations, however you wanna call it, distance between buildings. So we can create a setback between structures. Not to be closer than twenty feet or, so. They can be attached, but detached. Has to be greater than. Fifteen, twenty, thirty, hundred feet, whatever you wanna say.
The rule here is town hundred and twenty feet, isn't it?
Uh, we just changed, well, yeah, we just changed to the well that, um.
Between buildings?
No, lot line is ten feet.
Lot line is ten feet, so twenty would be minimum as far as that goes. But then we, right of ways and stuff like that, we just changed it, um, I can't remember what we changed it to.
Is it fifteen? I think it's twenty five.
Twenty five from the edge of the right away, correct, or, cause it used to be twice the height of the building.
Yeah, 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 but.
I guess twenty five does. We have, well, I don't look it up, but, um. I think it goes to the edge of the right away now, rather than.
The center of.
Center of stuff. Uh, but, I mean, it could be enough distance between them, so if one caught fire, it's not gonna fall off of the other thing.
I mean, until you just kind of stated more clearly, I, I didn't appreciate that this probably doesn't impact the multi.
No, no, I, I.
It, it didn't dawn on you.
Yes, like if, if, uh, these are three dwelling units, multi-family.
Yeah, so this, it's all.
We're dealing with one accessory dwelling.
Right.
Um, it wouldn't impact.
Right, and so, and consequently, for the same reason, it wouldn't apply to subdivisions.
Mm-hmm, strictly minimum lot size. Again, the worksheet is to create some parameters. That we do, we wanna work with it.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, so then move, let's move to that. So, if we go, do you guys wanna do that?
Well, I mean, here's another thing, it's a little twist in the rules, right, section four, accessory dwelling requirements. An accessory dwelling unit may be constructed only with an existing dwelling unit on the lot. So you can't buy bare land and.
And do it.
I don't know, how, how are they gonna stop that? I just don't get it. How do you stop someone from building a house with a garage apartment in a, you know, from scratch?
Yeah, I, I don't think you can, I, I mean, somebody could do that, I mean, and, and, and maybe we. While, you know, certainly that might be just fine, you know, where somebody builds a s- a single family home, and then five years later. You know, it's on. Bear, you know, on, 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 undeveloped ground, and then five years later decides to put an ADU on it too. I mean, how's that?
Do it all at once.
Shouldn't be all done at once, yeah.
Yeah, you just said it. Build a rental property into your primary, you know, all right, you can afford a house now, so we better buy land now.
See what the message says, five years, wow. Something like that.
Yeah. All these farms.
Basically, we gotta do definitely, we need to talk to Katie Call before we're gonna do anything or something.
Well, we can get our parameters, what we'd like to prevent, present to them.
Well, until we know, although, I think we'll discuss it with them. Yeah, so we can say free, free to buy.
Yeah. Do we wanna go quickly or the, uh, worksheet? Let's go and do that. So ADU worksheet, perfect to have, whole, uh, care, give a lodging, grant, grant, uh, fat, flats. In-law apartment, seasonal workers. Cow shopping, children, I have some of those. Uh, key elements. Occupancy, is the owner required to live on the premises?
Yeah.
We said no.
I really is.
You said no? Oh.
Yeah, sir.
I'm, I'm not sure yet.
I'm sure.
Of observing.
So I wanna say maybe for now. No.
We don't know.
If we don't.
Okay. Are principal or ADU allowed to be seasonal?
To be what?
Seasonal.
No.
Principal, structure, or ADU, are they allowed to be seasonal?
I'd say yes.
Yeah.
Can do what you want.
Well, this is why it's a worksheet, thinking about it and.
So maybe, so. Let me, let me, uh, let me do say.
Have, this is a board, have individual opinions and come together.
So let's say yes and no, so, uh, for occupancy. Uh, who, who, uh, the owners required to live on the premises, I will vote no, who votes no? One.
Well, at this moment, this is all. You know. Doesn't mean anything at the moment.
So.
It's supposed to inspire thought.
Okay, so I just want, just taking a poll, it's not gonna be that it passes or not, you're just taking a poll. For the fortunate, and I'm gonna put a date on this thing, today is, uh, the seventeenth. So, so who will vote no?
What was the question again?
The question is, the owner required to live in the premises?
Yes.
So one, yes, Mr. Baker?
Mm-hmm. Right now, I'm waiting toward no.
Okay. Just you.
George, yes.
Okay. Mister, uh, Alexander?
No.
No. I will say no too. So, so we almost split. Uh, are principal and or ADU allowed to be seasonal?
You what now, again?
Are principal, structure, or, or the ADU allowed to be seasonal?
Yes.
Seasonal, you know, rain or the summer.
No, winter versus summer.
Yeah.
I say no.
You say no?
No.
I will say yes, Mr. Baker?
Uh, maybe seasonal, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go with no.
Okay. Mister Field?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
All right, we'll do it, wait again. Mid-max term of rental, not less than twenty-eight days. You guys wanna vote yes for that?
Yes, I say yes.
Or you just say nine? That'd be twenty-eight days, we, what I mean.
I just said that, cause it's the shortest month. I just put that, because it's the shortest month.
Oh, yeah.
February.
We can, February.
You wanted to do one month, two month, one week, three days.
Yeah.
So, so we want, we wanna put terms of rentals in terms of the amount of time.
I don't, yeah.
You're done, did you say no?
Oh, uh, I think, uh, well, we'll put it this way, I don't believe we should have a maximum term in the rental.
Okay.
But I think probably there should be a minimum term. Uh, not one day or two days, or.
I, I would say it'd be like something like seven days or six days.
No.
Whatever, whatever's the common practice for rentals of kind camps. If we're gonna do, prohibit short-term rentals and define short-term rentals as seven or less days.
Yeah.
Uh, good point, yeah.
I would say at least seven days, that would be the minimum for me.
I'd be leaning more towards six.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I would wanna hear from the railtors and people like that, but.
Yes, you.
But they need a date.
Well, channels.
So we, do we wanna say minimum and max term limits, term, term of rentals in terms of the amount of time?
Why would we care whether somebody had a max or what we have, what would, in the events of having a max?
Well, you know.
You can't rent this more than five years, you can't rent more.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's say for instance, this happens in my country, okay, but just saying, I'm saying that. No, that happens here, it happens in my country. So a one-day rental, which is very, uh, getaway from an affair. You wanna have your town filled with affairs? That happens in my country.
That's it.
Then this.
Minimum.
So that the minimum of one day, you're allowing this market.
Yeah, uh, I, I agree, the minimum has to be something more than one day.
Than one day.
But I don't think that. Any maximum doesn't even benefit to.
I think that there's a lot of rentals that happen here for weekends. So maybe the minimum will be two days.
Well, we're trying to avoid the, uh, the party times, you know, for the weekend.
That's right, oh, okay, I see. So that's why you will say six days.
Okay.
Yeah, and I thought, I thought the general purpose of this law, whatever, was to provide housing for people, not to provide. They can go to.
Request.
Guest if they wanna rent something.
Yeah, they don't want.
Two days.
They go that, that, and that's, that's the concept behind it, so you wanna kind of go to things, you can go to the city. You want to, want to, you know. So, uh, so anyways, so we are, I guess we're hearing from Mr. Baker, from Mr. Uh, um. Sergeant that they, yes, we need max and minimum somehow, how we feel, Mr. Siri.
Or a maximum?
Maximum and minimum, you don't have to say a number now.
Minimum, yes, not a maximum.
Okay, but you said then that we should look into that, Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I'm undecided, but probably minimum. No, no.
So we actually have an agreement on that one, that we need at least a minute. That's great, so minimum, maximum numbers of occupants. So for bedroom or, or the dwelling, how many people we want, we want the bedroom, that's gonna be very hard.
Uh, I, I'd like to say, yeah, or.
Not true.
I don't, well, you don't wanna have.
I don't wanna know that.
Well, well, yeah, well, you know, you, yeah, well, I. If you have.
But how would I, how would I enforce that? I just like.
This is, I made this to inspire thought and discretion. So, like I said.
Paid me enough, I'll, I'll be the enforcer, right?
Okay. So I will tell you something, on that one, I will, I don't wanna get involved with that one, I would say no, right off. I don't wanna get involved with the number of occupants.
Well, let's see.
I just wanna know that I pay taxes, that they keep it off the.
Also keep in mind. Part of this, they're gonna be coming here for permits to build accessory dwelling units. And I have to go through the bedding of the separate systems and so forth. Conditions, all right?
Okay.
That we put forth on a lot of projects.
Yeah.
Can be, you know, this is a accessory dwelling unit. Two people per bedroom. You know, is what could be a condition of the.
All the pool.
But that's more of a. A rental.
That's related to the.
That's a rental agreement, more than, yeah, you can't do that.
So that's, that's the only way to.
Put it in order, it's a rental agreement.
Well, can we say according to refunding code, something like that?
Yeah.
There is no plumbing code, just per bedroom.
It's per bedroom, yeah.
So you can have a construction company rent it, and they have a day shift and an night shift, and they could, like a submarine, you swap. You know, one guy gets out of bed, somebody gets in it.
I mean, it seems to me the better way, if you wanna. Limit the number of people in an ADU, the better way to do that, rather than number of occupants, is number of bedrooms.
Yeah.
You know, if you want one or, or no more than two, for example.
So, but where are two people?
In fact, though, that kind of limits the number of people, you know, um.
So you're saying that we should, is, um, we should specify the number of bedrooms, rather than the number of people per bed?
Right, so avoid that question and, and answer the question below.
Maximum number of bedrooms. People, you know, college students can pass people in a bed.
Yeah, like.
Who cares? Not your bed.
You can do something, it's how people, how many people, and well, how will we know?
I am concerned, I, I'm concerned that, let's say that. During the summer.
They're gonna, keep in mind, these are tiny places, we're gonna have, we're gonna set a size limit on them, uh, it's not gonna be thirty-five. People in there.
Yeah.
It's.
You know, I have people talking to me in town, for instance, uh, the, uh, resource center. Who was built to a certain code. And now we have the, the farmer's market. And they said, you know, that building is not built to have, to, to, to host that amount of people one day.
Right.
Why Marshall?
But, but the bathroom use is the same thing, and they, and, and they, they have a source and it's right next to the, the street. I mean, that will keep loading up.
And that was an experimental subject, too.
Yeah.
So, so then take that, the one, one, what I'm going after that, take that and multiply that maybe by a hundred in this town, when it's going.
That's, I wouldn't know words away from the streets, so I don't know.
I mean, one thing, you know, that took me a while to realize, uh, and it sort of just. Uh, kind of diminished some of my concerns, is the fact that. Most of the building, Belgrade Lakes Village is in the shoreline zone. And so most of these are gonna occur outside the shoreline zone, of course, and, and, you know, it, it could be on my property, it could be on Rich's. I mean, you know, it's not gonna, uh, I mean, some of them will, you know, there'll be some in the depot. Possibly, uh, you know, where there's a history of. Drinking water supply wells, uh, contaminated by, uh, septic systems, but, um, and, or the end towards Hammond Lumber has a history, but, um. I don't know, but. You know, that's the most congested part down, and it's in the, most of it's in shoreline zone.
So, um. Do, should we say how many occupants per, per space? No?
Basically, it'll limit itself.
Say no? Uh, Mr. Alexander said no, I say no, Mr. Sheer said no.
First thing, yeah.
Uh, number of occupants per this, per space.
Per space?
Yeah.
Per space.
So can be per bedroom or per dwelling? Do you think we should decide, we should say two people, one person, three people?
I don't know.
You don't have to say that. And, and Mr. Baker, what do you think?
I don't think we need to, right, where.
So we have four no's and, and, and one that is undecided. So maximum number of beds, should we specify that?
Yeah.
Mr. Baker?
Uh, definitely rest on the number and principle. Otherwise, you're, uh, not gonna be called such a.
Where is this, yes?
Right, that these are gonna be pretty small buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at least if we put the right numbers on it.
Well.
Um. Thinking if I had to give a number, uh, if, if we were gonna do it, I'd say two, but, uh.
Okay, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Shear?
I'm in agreement.
All right, Mr. Alexander?
I'm undecided.
I'm undecided. I will say yes to, no more than two. If I, I mean, we can make it a proportion, one for every, five homes for my, uh, island's far B. So.
One thing we have to remember.
There's no doubt New Shoreland zoning of accessory dwelling unit versus.
Is there?
No. No, but.
Accessory structure.
But accessory and um and to. Here, the definition in these rules, you don't have to have all three cooking, bathroom and sleeping. Uh you um, a lot of accessory dwelling units don't have any cooking. Cause they eat, you know, it is the grandparents or it is the children or whatever, but and they they eat the primary. They might have that, yeah.
The thing is, this allows for the kitchen. Then the clarinet there, it allows them.
Yeah.
So this allow for the kitchen?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, all three.
Yeah, allows for all three.
Said dwell.
But some will not have all three, some might not have the kitchen.
Okay, we're halfway through, we've done it. Size, minimum as required by state, which is a hundred ninety, or maximum. And we we talk about that, we have parameters about that. Uh we are talking about uh something in the ballpark. It's here. I'm not sure that it's gonna be anything between forty to a hundred uh percent of the principal. Or five hundred square feet to a thousand square feet, whatever is minimal, but not less than a hundred ninety. We don't, we, I guess we're set on that one, we okay with a hundred ninety. Uh but we keep, we're gonna work around those perimeters, so we have that answered right there. Uh and then, or at least we have a a someone that we're gonna let him know. Can the ADU become the principal dwelling unit on the lot?
I don't know, uh.
Can the ADU become the principal dwelling unit on the lot, means?
No.
Then we had a principal, and we add the ADU, then we can swap uh concepts.
Why weren't you?
Why not?
Um you have a new building, you have a hundred year old building. Why wouldn't someone wanna live in the new building and follow up their principal and call the other one, the ADU?
Personal bread, what if somebody buys it? They got, you know, original guys. Yeah, I wanna own that house and I'm gonna rent that one.
So can the ADU become the primary dwelling unit on the lot?
In the sake of an elderly couple that's using the ADU for income, let's just say one of the partners, the couple dies. You got a widow or a widower that wants to downsize, and they say, well, that's a lot easier for me to take care of, I'm gonna live in the smaller.
And then the big one becomes the ADU.
Well, that I guess my thought is. My primary dwelling or something, but. You got an accessory dwelling here and build it small. How can you, then just because the person wants to live in it instead of the big house, call that the. I mean, it's not accessory to the uh bigger dwelling, that the bigger houses still the primary. I think I I I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, geez, we're trying to make. All these rules in a way that uh people can be really nearly with whatever they had.
Well, they definitely didn't come our way eventually, and we have to have an answer, we decided that the ordinance would say no.
No. It's gonna be personal property. Would you title it as you wish, but it's personal property. Well, yeah, but we. If. We can, we can set, uh if someone wants to go with the accessory, okay, they're they're creating. Possible restriction by many of that. No, yeah.
So is there gonna be a tax code eventually since? So that's not gonna affect the taxes in town?
Oh, there'll be tax, infrastructure gets taxed. Sell the chicken coop.
So I would see it something like um, an ADU is gonna be limited by. Square footage. So, um. If we somehow limit that ADU, even if it's. If it was permitted as a ADU, then it can never exceed this square footage.
Or the principal.
Even if it does become the principal because the fire burnt out the other one.
Oh.
It could never be, well, no, if you lost.
If you lose the principal, then the the ADU will be the principal. That's the only.
There's gonna be some thought put into that, but I. Uh maybe it should just be an ADU.
Yeah, this is supposed to be inspiring thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it is gonna go to town, a lot of the hearings.
Maybe it should just be considered an ADU always and um. But if your principal structure is destroyed in some form, it can become your principal structure.
If if it is.
For expansion.
You have to talk to the plan.
I don't know, that's kind of, we're gonna talk about this, we'll, maybe, I don't know, I don't know how I feel on that one yet.
Okay, so can the ADU have attached garage?
Oh.
So everybody's saying agree with that?
I I agree with it. I'm I'm drawing here, I'm standing here thinking too, going back to uh size and square footage and. There was a part about forty percent or whatever. Size of the. Or is the the main home or whatever, I don't think. I don't think I would be in favor of having anything that does deal with the percentage of the principal structure, because. Uh if you got a mansion there, they can build the accessory dwelling units, bigger than my house. I don't, you know, accessory dwelling, I have, I keep having to go back to, these are things that allow for a couple people to live.
Yeah.
To make it.
Well, it's supposed to be an affordable housing option.
Yeah, yeah.
So I I agree with Rich on that.
So my, I don't know, throw you a rent, a rental now. So if I'm using the ADU to take care of my two elder parents. And they have mobility issues. Wouldn't be nice to have an attached garage in it, cause if there's an emergency, I can move them from the room. Right to the car. Although we have services here to take care of that, we have uh ambulance here, EMT.
Well, they're accessory dwelling, and it should be single story on a slab anyways, they come out of the door into the ambulance.
Right, yeah.
Pull the car up to the door. Gonna tax. Couldn't have to as well.
You live in the winter, you wanna, you wanna clean snow in the winter?
So does it define what an accessory dwelling unit is, does it define, or it's just for two people, does it define? It's just what a necessary dwelling is supposed to do is provide housing, cause we're in a housing shortage.
Yeah.
For all scopes.
Yeah. And that's one portion of that scope is gonna be elderly.
One portion of. It's gonna be for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody. So we gotta stop thinking that it's just for the elderly.
Yeah.
It's to provide extra housing, so we can only limit it so much if it's gonna work, uh and provide housing. That's what it is, housing. It's not just an in-law apartment, it's not just for your in-laws, it's not just for your elderly parents, it's for housing. And that's what this whole thing is all about.
So I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but can be there a clause, that if the uh the uh the ADU was being used. By early person that have mobility issues, that a garage can be allowed. Do, what do you think?
Well, maybe if it's part of the original, like say we allow twelve hundred foot. Well, if it's part of that footprint, or that twelve hundred square feet, then it could be allowed.
And why would you do that?
What, I I think it's like going back to Rich, accessory dwelling units are supposed to be accessory, smaller than the principal.
Okay.
And if you start allowing people, well, I'm gonna build a maximum sized accessory dwelling unit. Well, then a year later, I wanna put a garage on it, well, now your accessory dwelling unit is bigger than what.
Than the house, okay, got you, got you.
So it can be an option.
So I I can actually.
I believe that handout I gave you had some floor plans that showed one with a garage and one without, but they were both the same footprint.
You have it, where is it?
That one you were originally reading, I mean, I gave you a couple of handouts, one of them had that. It was right there on the front page.
This one? So the before one was a garage.
Well, I'm, that might be a different handout, I've given you. Last meeting I gave one, the meeting for that I gave one, but there's a lot of information, I mean, seems to help.
So I I will, I will stretch myself to say that, that if it's ready for elders. And the uh the garage is incorporated in the ADU. In the print of that, it will pass, we will pass.
The garage can't be, cannot.
The garage cannot be added to the ADU, that the garage have to be, or the uh little hut for the car. Have to be part of the ADU.
Right, and cannot be determined.
So what's stopping them from just getting a permit to put a garage, detached garage?
You cannot.
Nothing, there's nothing stopping it, so why, why make the effort? So they put an ADU in. Okay, I want a garage, they move over ten feet, put a garage, what the hell's the difference?
Well, the the difference is, uh Craig, if you take care of elders.
They could put a thirty by forty garage in if they wanted to.
Well, they can do that even before.
So.
The the difference, I guess, is that it would have to comply with the dimensional standards of the minimum lot size ordinance, but as a virtue of. Being detached, you know? That that's. Yeah, so you can't put it, you know, right against the property line and right up against the road. You're right, it was twenty five feet from the near edge of the right.
I took care of my mom for seven years, and I would always have to go up the stairs and down. It would be so nice to getting the garage and just walk her from the garage to her room. Walk, the garage is here, open the door, here's your room.
Well, when you're speaking of that, it, uh I wasn't so sure about the garage aspect, but I was thinking that if we set a maximum. Square footage.
Mm-hmm.
It should be large enough so everything could be on the first floor.
Yeah.
For that reason.
Mm-hmm.
I I mean, I understand your point, but some some of these are gonna be used for uh uh care facilities for. Well, it might be for me, I don't know.
That one, okay, and just leave those thoughts there and uh, so ADU square footage. To include garage.
Oz, can I ask a stupid question? I I I, it's like I should know this, but it seems like I I can't come up with it. In all the places where they, where this regulation talks about square footage, are they talking footprint or floor area?
I'm thinking. Floor area, I don't know.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but then I went in, I can't find where it says one way or the other.
No, it doesn't say, I mean, that's I going back for it too, we did twelve hundred square feet, is it? You know, twenty by twenty, that's this tall, you know, two stories or.
That's another question, question.
It is.
Basic.
And then again, for minimum lot size, like to Greg's point, what's the stopping from having a house, building an ADU, and then they want a big garage? How many structures per lot, we don't limit that.
What would be the problem with doing that?
Somebody wants one. I mean, what's the point, we're Americans, we want it, we build it. You know, somebody might have a car collection, or decide. The second owner might say, oh, I'm gonna build a big garage out here, as a workshop.
What would be the problem with that, doing that, no?
No, that's Greg's point, why not? So. But would, 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 but it wouldn't be an ADU, though. Garage wouldn't, no? So, I guess the point is, in the state of Maine. They don't. A lot of communities don't allow apartments over garages, we're one of them. But a lot of across the United States, it's very pervasive.
Yes.
I mean, where did Fonzie live? I mean, that would.
They don't allow housing over garages here.
Where, in Belgrade?
Yeah.
Where'd it say that?
I know.
Where'd it say that? I didn't know that.
Well, you can if that's your primary house, but you can't have a s- a second dwelling as it stands right now.
Can't have a kitchen. The minimum lot size.
Well, you you can't have it if you have, like, say, a two acre lot.
Oh, if you have conventional.
Yeah, you you just have to meet the dimensions.
Yeah.
At uh at the moment.
But our current minimum lot size, you have one dwelling per lot. And you go to Milwaukee where Fonzie lived, well, they had row housing with garages and apartments in low, that's very common. Or in the basement, basement apartments. So.
And that's why I find, you know, that's why, that TV show wouldn't film it, man.
So, so here. Uh with you, with the uh lot size, you can only have one dwelling unit, and if you have a garage. You can have people living on the garage.
If there's a kitchen there, if you live up there, they can't have a kitchen, because that would make it a dwelling. That, that, that's a minimal lot, minimal lot order? Are you ready? No, I haven't.
Yeah, but the key is that you have to meet the lot size.
Or the dimensional.
Yeah, so, you know, if it's. Two, you uh you have to have two, you know, eighty thousand square feet.
This uh ADU worksheet we're going through right now.
Yeah.
Did you put that together?
Yeah.
No, it's something I made, just different aspects for us to think about, talk.
I was just wondering whether the ADU. Uh well, on the purpose, and it's going back to Craig's comment about this is all about affordable housing, not. Uh, you know. People or something, but in the purpose, for ADU workshop here, it says affordable caregiving lodging. Granny flat, in-law apartment, seasonal workers, couch surfing children, but doesn't. Imply that to uh at least what I was worded, that if the ADU is. For. A pro- providing housing for the average individual, uh or to. Reduce the cost of housing versus, is the AD unit. Uh provision primarily to provide housing for parents or older people. Uh and it's. I mean, just.
Now, that narrow uh body, narrow interpretation, we're creating fucking more of a broader interpretation.
Yeah, but which, which is a reasonable question, are we talking about ADUs as for. Uh helping out. Housing for, there is a segment, or the housing for the general population.
Yeah.
To affordable housing for the general population, I'm not sure what that. Provision is exactly.
This talks about affordable housing, okay, it doesn't mention. Couch surfing, it doesn't mention. Uh Airbnb, but. Reality is, that's where it's gonna end up.
That's no entrance, that's, that's what will be.
This law, this law, this new law aside, to the extent this matters, uh, the co- town's comprehensive plan. Have a whole chapter on the need to provide more affordable housing in Belgrade. Because of the high median cost of single family homes in Belgrade. So, you know, if we keep the, our eye on the ball of it being about affordable housing. I think that would be a, in my opinion, would be a good thing.
Well, yeah, but then all those other things fall under that, but.
And I think we capture. That the best way to capture the restrictions on all this is by size.
Yeah. Cause you can't enforce who's there, how many, and all that other stuff.
So if we choose a thousand or choose nine hundred or do twelve hundred, where it's gonna be affordable housing. I'd be leaning towards a thousand or twelve hundred square feet. Total living space, that's not footprint, that's living space. Uh, I'd be, I'm gonna be leaning somewhere in that ballpark.
Now, can the ADU have future expansions? I would say yes, just to the limit, to the restriction limit.
So the amount of square footage.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's a better, you think?
Yeah, as long as what is the square footage? We decide if they build it smaller and then wanna bring it up to whatever they're allowable.
So we can't see whatever square footage.
And you'll try with the one bedroom, the two, the second bedroom, you know, if the septic allowed.
And we should go by square, uh, square footage. Unlike, um, shoreline zone should be living space. So that's most stories. Is included.
Say that again, sorry.
So our square footage, when we're thinking about square footage.
Yep.
It shouldn't be footprint, it should be living space.
That makes, that makes sense to me, given what we're talking about.
So with a thirty by thirty building.
That's nine hundred square.
Nine hundred. Where feet, what if they got two stories?
Right, yeah, okay.
And includes that.
Yeah.
Like volume.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Designing standards. Septic expansions or separate modular homes, certificate occupancy required. Type, attached, attached or within. I don't care.
So can a mobile home be an accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Yeah. These are all things we need to put into the parameters. Cause they're all gonna come up. Keep on asking us those questions.
So type, type, attach or detach or within are fine.
Yeah. Within would be the basement or an attic.
It can be in a basement or an attic.
Yeah, that that would be within. Or you divide your house, you got a big house.
Can the ADU, can existing dwellings be converted to be a duplex?
Is it gonna?
Can exist, existing dwellings be converted to a duplex?
Yes.
Yes. But I think that the fire wall determination.
Oh, yeah.
Reflexes that that fire barriers.
Yeah, I lived in one of them, yeah.
Why it's different, reflex is different from having it within, you know? I mean, I think it should be allowed. It may be that it has, the way it has to be constructed. There's some limitations there.
What'd you say, to meet fires, you know?
Right, parking.
That's.
A big.
Not that down the road.
Uh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can. You can't deal with that under the law. The only, the only way, you know, uh, I can think of. That we may be able to is if there was some townwide, um. Prohibition on, on street parking for streets that are. Of a, a certain narrow width or something like that, such that if you had it, a fire truck couldn't get by or something like that. You can't obstruct a lane of the road. So if somebody wants to park off-street, they have to be off-street. Run into horseshoe point road.
Yeah, I was gonna say with cookies, any cookie.
Their tires are on the pavement.
Right.
I knock on the door and tell them, get the tires off.
Right, oh yeah, they're still doing that.
No, they're not.
Oh, yeah.
Take a picture and bring them.
Right, last one, is minimum number of spaces for bedroom or joint, oh, that's part of the parking. So we don't wanna tackle that one, we're done with this. I'm gonna type all this up and I'll turn it to hands. And next thing, uh, in the agenda is, um. The full minutes, well, we have to go with you or this at the end, right? So let's do, let's do our proof that, uh, the minutes.
Guess who didn't give them to you?
Ah.
They didn't get them.
Hmm.
Make a motion to approve it.
Next time.
So next time, so we'll move to the next thing, is we're gonna be, uh, reading. Um, the, in addition to the ordinance proposed by hands. Related to grandfather. So in effort to pre, to prevent grandfather in perpetuity. With planning board suggest and a member to the commercial development review ordinance, article three, section one. And we will be adding there, to be added on their applicability, I, we item I. Any business that have been inactive for three years. Must appear for review prior to reopening.
Um, appear for review, I have just a question that must. Uh, renew the permit, uh. Um, I guess, I guess I'm wondering whether we're saying a permit if fired after three weeks.
After three years, they would have to come to you as if it was obtained of use, from no use to paying a new use. So this wouldn't. Apply just to those projects that were previously approved by the planning board. These would be ones. That never received approval because they pre, originally predated the effective date of the ordinance. I would say any business that is inactive, so the real estate place closes down and sitting there empty for three years and. Or wants to reopen. We'll, we'll need to. Get a handle on what legal bounds there are on our ability to deal with an issue like this, cause. Of, um, I'm pretty sure there's some court rulings.
I was just gonna say, there's court rule.
I can't say that I profess to know what they say, but.
And we already have something as far as shoreline zone, so shoreline zone has a one year. Limitation, so.
Yeah, three years.
But I'm not really for this, if it's not only shoreline zone or. You know, what's the difference if it's closed down for five years and they wanna reopen? Look, it's Christmas tree shop, changed hands. So we're gonna say, in next year, it's not open, um, you gotta come back in for a full blown permit again, I don't. I don't, I'm not for it.
How much is every permit? When you come and do your permit, how much is every?
It could be ten thousand dollars. You have to do all your engineering and all that list stuff and go through everything all over again. And it probably won't even be permitted in some spots. So you're taking the value away from the property.
Oh, I never thought on that.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure, I totally agree, I think that. A business that has been out of business for three years, I agree that. Uh, my thinking is that they have to spend fifty thousand dollars to do everything. I'm not sure that they have to go back and do everything all over, but. Uh, there's gotta be some point at which something is no longer grandfather. Um. And until it's three years, five years, or whatever.
Uh, I'd like to say I'd be checking the legal for it, because I'm pretty sure there's court cases out there defining. Uh, that once it's a business, it can be a business as.
Yeah, yeah. The other thought I had is I, I think. I agree with the concept of it, but must appear for review prior to. I'm not sure what that legally means, uh, is shall renew the permit or whatever, but. Uh, appear for review doesn't tell me what they really need to do.
This is going under applicability, which is page two, page three. And it's just where does this ordinance apply?
Yeah.
So this isn't making a legal statement. It's just saying who needs to come before the board.
So I guess my thing will be, for instance, let's say. I don't know, we give a permit to somebody to, like, Hello Park, for instance, and. They decided to reopen and it's not exactly. Why Hello Park was to instead of being a bakery. It becomes strictly a deli, making sandwiches, because I've been a baker, a bakery. Um. Uh, or actually, this thing that's, is backwards, it, it started at the deli. And now it's gonna be a bakery and, you know, they're, it just traded, just stay or a bakery. So my, my thing about it is that if we, the change of use. My trigger or require services of the town in the middle of emergency.
Okay, but that fall under change of use.
That will fall with change of use.
So let's just say hello, goodbye becomes a house. For four years. Somebody else buys it and says, I wanna make it hello, goodbye again. So they have to come here for change of use or reopen. This grandfather in perpetuity is what we're trying to avoid.
It, 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 the thing is, coming to the planning board triggers all the, all the things of the town, is my thought into it. The need for, maybe for, um, knowing that, uh, there might be a fire there, they will need to know. Uh, are. I don't know, they have gas tanks, they're using propane, what, all these things, by coming here. We are learning the fire marshal, this, 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 this sort of things in this location. That's a part that I, I have issues with. I, and then the finance part, I never thought about that. Glad you brought it over, um. It's a battle with there, it's what it's. But at one point or another, you know, if it, if the company, if a business goes for three years. Uh, it can be the same one. Well, if it is the same one, I, I'm not sure.
Again, this.
How to be some thought to it?
This is the starting point. I'm trying to inspire the thought.
Sure.
The idea is to prevent grandfather in perpetuity.
Sure.
Because lord knows, everybody's saying a grandfather for this and a grandfather for that, but. Somebody else can't do something across the place.
An example would be, let's go down the, uh, village where you had Days Marina, okay? Used to be Days Marina down, and now it's a post office and they got changed out, right? Someone could come in, buy that piece of property, you know, post office gets out, you know, that piece of property was up to sale. And someone I could come and say, please, I want, I want, I buy it and I wanna change it back to what it was, you know, years ago. They were in the marine.
Can't.
Why not?
Because it's in the shoreline zone, you have one year. So if it was out of a business for one year. Then you keep, you can't, you have to be repermitted. It's in the shoreline zone.
You're, you're right there.
Okay.
Outside the shoreline.
Okay, so this would be, so.
This would be for the whole town.
This would be outside of shoreline zone here.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I, let's, let's, one time, we'll be up in the, figure, up in a, um. What corner, what corner road and Route Eight, where that was a cookie store there.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that.
It used to be a bar.
And that, that, that gets filled out and, um. And it would change into, uh, growing marijuana, okay? Uh, so I, then I can say, that goes up the sale. And I buy the property and I don't wanna run to, to the marijuana thing, I'm gonna change it back to what it was. You know, a restaurant. Could I do that, you know? I should, I should be able to do that, let's say ten years has gone by, you know?
You should or shouldn't?
You should or should not be allowed to, to open.
I, I, I would, I, I'd like to, you know, do it. Ten years have gone by, it's, it's been up there as a, you know.
Marijuana.
Marijuana place and I buy it and say, okay, I'm gonna, I wanna change, I wanna change, I wanna run a restaurant, it's grandfather.
You don't know what electrical, plumbing and other situations have changed in that, huh? So, you know, what are the questions?
So you, you are saying that they should be reading permits?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, that's my question, do I have to come to the planning board to, you know, get, you know, reapply or? Get reviewed somehow or another?
That's what I'm always saying, but for more than three years, you come here.
So, so what are the questions?
Then, 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 then that's the page, okay, then I'm gonna have to go through and make sure it's funding up to speed.
Yeah.
And all that, which is, I think would be reasonable, you know, you know, it's lots of good business.
It'll be interesting to see if, what we learn in terms of sort of the political, uh, the, the legal. Parameters, whether, you know, there's any, uh, room for considering what type of. You know, a business has been at, uh, that was, um, established and, and constructed. Prior to two thousand and one and the establishment of the ordinance. Uh. Uh, goes out of business for an extended period of time and then. Uh, is resurrected as a different kind of business, what that new business is versus what the original business is, whether that makes any difference. So would it be like the provisions we already have in the ordinance for a change of use, um. Where it depends on. Uh, i- i- if they need to get an approval, depends on the amount of traffic they're gonna generate. Whether they're gonna be handling and storing hazardous materials and a few other things, you know? So for example, if it goes from being a, um. Uh, a real estate office. To an auto repair shop. Is that handled the same way as if it goes from a real estate office with five years or ten years or whatever the time period's gonna be? To another real estate, you know, it seems to me that might be in a.
Well, that's a change of use.
Yeah, the change of use, but it, it never was approved under the ordinance to begin with, so. Does that make a difference, you know, um?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
I don't know, I have no clue. No, I mean, good point, George, you got a commercial building and it's gonna be a commercial use of that sort. Yeah, might, I mean, it might have a much greater or lesser impact in terms of traffic it generates. Amount of parking it needs. You know, not every place is appropriate to be handling hazardous materials. If it goes from real estate sales to real estate rentals and you have a higher traffic flow and higher, again, plumbing. I mean, some of them is, you know, it's hard to tell, but if it clearly, if it goes from, say, uh. Uh, an insurance office or a real estate office to a retail store, you know, it's gonna have a lot more traffic.
Little man you faster.
Yeah. We could someday since many back, many back right down.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
So what I, I hear, so maybe, should we have a beautiful lawyer on this thing?
I. I think we should talk about it more, I think we should talk about it at, uh, our next meeting, at some future meeting. And I think that would be a good first step myself, and I think at that meeting, we should decide what the question is that we want to ask.
Yeah.
Right. So next item on the agenda, I want to turn into a a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Any more from the C E O?
Don't you dare.
Well, not to mention it. I think that motion to adjourn is probably very timely.
So what is the motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Uh uh Alexander, great emotion, and your CEO seconded, and we're gonna vote on it today. Yes, the um. I would feel like what you want to.
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Deal.
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan, I said yes, and we're done.